All right, welcome, everyone. This is Kristin Vincent, Chair of the Westboro School Committee. Today is Wednesday, November 17th, 2021. This meeting of the Westboro School Committee is called to order. Please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone attending the school committee meeting tonight is welcome to wear a mask if they choose. We ask that unvaccinated individuals wear a mask while in this building. I'd like to notify everyone in the room with us tonight that this meeting is being recorded by Westboro TV. School committee meetings are available for remote viewing or listening on Westboro TV's government channels, Verizon 28 and Charter 192, and online on the Westboro TV YouTube channel. A recording of this meeting will be posted on the YouTube channel in the next day or so. Thank you to Westboro TV for covering the broadcast tonight. We have with us for the meeting Superintendent Amber Bach, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Daniel Mayer, Director of Finance and Administration David Gordon, Vice Chair of the Westboro School Committee Steve Durett, School Committee Members Sarah Dulay, Lisa Edinburgh, and Raghu Nandan. Andrew Chen is our student representative, but he's not here with us tonight. Our Recording Secretary Jen Benton is here, and we have staff from Westboro TV handling the broadcast and recording of this meeting. Our agenda for this meeting is as follows. We will have an approval of minutes from November 2nd regular session. We'll have a superintendent's report, Assistant Superintendent's report, and a report from the Director of Finance and Administration. We'll have school committee member reports, building project updates, citizens' requests. Then we will have a COVID protocol discussion, our budget presentation number three, and to round out the agenda, we will accept a donation to the Borough Program on behalf of the Borough Program. And there is no need for an executive session tonight. So we will begin with an approval of minutes from November 2nd regular session.
I make a motion to approve the November 2nd minutes, but amended, amended minutes.
Second.
An amendment under Budget Number Two discussion at the last meeting. Mr. Nandan asked if there were 34 additional IEP enrollments. Mrs. Bach said yes, but some of those were from homeschooled that came back and some move-ins. Ms. Edinburgh commented that the total is 618. The change is, quote, "She was then corrected by Sherri Stevens via text that the 34 additional IEPs to the 618 is 652 total."
I love the way of wide participation in our meetings.
Yes.
I love technology.
Also, under the discussion of communication practices, Ms. Edinburgh asked if there would be a change to our citizens' request protocol. Ms. Vincent said our protocols will stay the same. I'm adding partially for now with the public invited to come in person or send us something read in an email for public record, not to be read publicly during a meeting. That was the change that happened during our last discussion. Those are the amendments.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving them?
Aye.
Okay, that's, thank you, unanimous approval of the minutes. I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent. Welcome.
Oh, my gosh, all right. Good to see all of you. I have so many updates, I'm trying to streamline them. But we're missing Andrew, so I know I can pick up a few. It's good to see all of you. We've a focused meeting tonight of, you know, a lot of important things to cover. Want to begin by acknowledging we have our girls' sports teams continuing to do very well. The soccer team is playing right now, and I'm sure you guys could have better details since I know you know a lot about the players. And the volleyball team, one in three, and will go to the state finals. I think we're still waiting on the location and time. I know that it'll be a busy weekend because we also have the Turkey Trot, which I'm sure Sarah's going to talk about, so I'll leave that for her. I want to acknowledge that Veterans Day last week on the 11th was really very celebratory to feel the return to the opportunity to gather as a community and honor our vets. I was able to, I really enjoy that day's ceremonies where we proceed to each of the different cemeteries. We play taps, we say prayer, we honor those, and then move to the next cemetery. And I think it's just a time for reflection and gathering with our community members, and it was very, very, I thought, really touching this year just to kind of be back together for that. We then, of course, gather out in front of Forbes here where a number of veterans speak. And this year, they actually dedicated the Blue Star Award Garden, which is very, very, I think, appropriate in Westboro where we spend a lot of time recognizing the importance of honoring our vets, and that kind of anchors the whole memorial display out there. And it was a really lovely ceremony. Our students also sang and played taps, and I just want to give a shout out to them as participants that really bring a lot of music to that day. Also want to recognize that it's Kindness Week. We are a partner in kindness as the Westboro Public Schools, working with the town organization, Westboro Connects. They opened it up with Susan Verde. She was an author who did a beautiful job welcoming people. And there was a whole series of activities and events on Saturday at the high school after people heard her speak about kindness and living kindness for yourself and others in the world, and her books really represent that. It was really very nice to meet her. The Kindness Man is out and about this week. Westboro Women's Club, I just want to give a shout out to them. They're such active, engaged members in community work, and they were participating, doing Chalk the Walks today all over town. And then there are school activities going on all across our schools, a lot of kindness cards and recognitions at the building levels of shout-outs of kindness and recognition, and then some organized events to take cookies to the fire station. There's an event where Mill Pond is doing a clothing drive for homeless vets, and then coming together with the veterans, Westboro veterans, to have a morning of talking and conversation together in small group, and then they'll organize the clothes and then work in partnership with our local vets and our students at Mill Pond to take the clothing to the women's and men's homeless shelter in Worcester. Just a really nice event. We love our collaboration with the vets. They've got a lot of activities that are school-based during the year, which is nice. I want to recognize, lastly, the incredible kind of Herculean task of opening Fail's School on Monday and greeting the students as they moved into the new building. It culminated across the 10th, 11th, 12th, and through the weekend, and then into the doors welcoming them on Monday. It went very, very smoothly. I think parents, faculty, and students were all very, very excited to enter the building. I just want to acknowledge that, again, opening a building is a recognition at the town level for the funding, the support, and the care of the long-term health of our community's buildings. We will provide to the community an opportunity to tour, to celebrate, and to see the new building. We offered closure on the old Fail's Building, and that was really well-attended. I'm sure that we will find that a community event where we can open the doors of the new Fail's will also be very celebratory. We would then do a final ribbon-cutting, most likely in the spring when we finish the grounds as well. So, things to figure out ahead, I'm sure Steve will talk about it as well. I just want to give a shout out to the strong leadership of Steve Durett as the Chair of Endless Building Committees. And without his leadership, I can unequivocally say we would not have gotten to where we were with the high-quality building we have and the innovation of a net-zero building looking to the future. So I just want to thank and commend Steve for his leadership and support. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. Lots going on. Daniel, welcome.
Good evening. One thing to report on, I wanted to give you an update about the high school screening that went on last week as part of our effort to work on social-emotional learning issues. We had, for the first time this year, we, or first time ever, we had launched an initiative to do a screening of all ninth graders to see, you know, where they were at in terms of their mental sort of health on the way into their high school experience, to see if, you know, to catch the kids who are suffering from depression or any, you know, severe suicidal or self-harm ideation. It's, you know, very often, we will have students that are clearly on our radar because of parent communication, student communication, teacher identification, but we're using a new technique, which is to be able to have the students actually fill out a questionnaire. And the, you may recall, I talked to you about it maybe several weeks back, about how it was going to be constructed, is that we were working with the Riverside Trauma Center to have them help coach our counselors on how to use this screener and how to quickly set up meetings with the students as they're identified, if they're in what we could call critical range. And so the event went as smoothly as possible. It was one day, it was November 9th last week. We had counselors from several of our buildings there so that they, from the younger grades, they could learn from the experience and work with Riverside. And what we screened the entire ninth grade class, there were three students who were identified as high alert, which would, is considered at high risk for, you know, suicide ideation, 12 who were medium alert, and then there was 95 who were low alert. So it basically is about a third of the class that are identified for some counseling to have some follow-up conversations. Obviously, those, the 15 that I'm talking about that were high and medium were immediately talked with that day, but within 24, within two or three days, all-
Within two days, they met with everybody.
Yeah, everybody that is on the alert radar. And so it was very informative. There were students that we hadn't been, you know, thinking needed our attention, that, you know, now are getting some attention, so that's exactly why we have this kind of screener. The plans, the plan now is to look at implementing something similar. It has a different set of questions, but similar kind of screening in the middle school, and then, you know, eventually move up the grades at the high school as we, as we, you know, sort of reflect on how this worked and how to do it at other grade levels. But, so anyhow, that, I just thought you'd be interested in knowing.
I like so much about the strength-based proactive approach to gain opportunities for trusting conversation and opportunities to be explicit. We often hear that unless you are explicit to say, "We're concerned and we want to check about everyone's mental health," everyone has mental health in an array of how they live. It's a normal and typical thing to have a continuum of experiences at all times. And we talk about normalizing that conversation and gaining comfort and perspective and helping students to know as they mature that everybody has a continuum of mental health. And I think you're always learning to read it, look at it, interpret it, and respond to it. And I think what I'm most pleased about in the screener is leveling that playing field of starting those conversations, especially with students who, for the last year and a quarter, had really impacted experiences and less organized transition with us, was a really perfect target group to get a jump in early on at the high school. So, really pleased, want to give a shout out to the guidance team for how they stepped up for starting this new work. You have a question, Lisa?
I just wanted to comment because it comes back to Raghu's comment, I don't know how many months ago, that said, "We want to focus on social-emotional learning and mental health support for our students." And although we know from many reports that there's a lot of services that exist within our public schools, our district, I know that you guys are continuing to work to increase that, and this is just one of those examples that really pans out. I got feedback about that day, and it works well. And it's pretty extraordinary that they met with, you know, basically 50 students within a couple of days to sort of get, not, you know, my understanding is that it was also about making sure that those 50 had the tools to respond immediately to whatever they were feeling at that moment or in that time, and that they're on the right road. And I'm glad to see that we're going to think about that for middle school, and it sort of aligns with the values that we've talked about on this committee. So, thank you.
It was, just for the record, it's about 100 students that were there. Over 100, it was, let's see, 120-ish.
Of the third tier, I was talking about the first two tiers, but the third tier, yeah. To know that those, and it is, I mean, it should be shocking to people to know that a third of that class is struggling in a way that requires tools for feeling supported and becoming self-sufficient in those tools to be able to handle stress, anxiety, depression, or suicidal ideation.
Thank you. I have a quick question, too. Are the parents contacted at all then? You know, obviously, if there's an issue that they should be aware of also.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
David?
Thank you. Brief updates tonight, just wanted to follow up or echo Amber's comments related to the opening of Fail's. I just wanted to give a shout out to our Food Service Director, Jacob Martin. Jacob and I spoke prior to the opening of Fail's. He worked, put together somewhat of a strategic plan to make sure that not only was he able to cover Fail's, but, you know, still had some coverage throughout the district, bringing in support if necessary, but also kind of setting up a plan and having, you know, a policy or an effective kind of backup if his attention was needed at the Fail. So I wanted to give him a shout out and say that my understanding that it's going well, he's actually doing invasive look at some of the equipment, making sure we have enough warmers and so on and so forth. So he's really, has his hands on the ground level, which I know gets appreciated from his staff. The other short one would be is just to talk a little bit about NRT. We are continually working to do better with routes and timing. Myself, Cindy Crowley, Lisa, tend to meet with NRT regularly to talk about their process and their ability to equitably make sure that transportation is done fairly and do the best they can. I'll probably stop there because I know Lisa may have an update on the app. So, that's it for today, it's just the food service and the overall update on NRT.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question.
Yep.
Has the driver situation improved at all?
You just used your microphone.
The driver situation improved at all?
The driver.
The drivers. So, we are still currently, we've actually got news that, via our attempt to increase drivers, we have one driver within the community-
One new, yeah.
-that's actually gone through the process, tested, and basically got approved and has their licensure, I should say, to drive. So we do have now a new person that can back up the process. We plan to re-communicate that effort and let people know that it's paid training and things of that nature. So, we're progressively looking. So, yes, the state is, and NRT is still dealing with their driver shortage issue, but I think as a community, you know, we're putting our best foot forward.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Sarah?
Since Andrew's not here, also, I will just mention Bandarama happened last night as well. It was great, it was on Westboro TV, so I went back and forth between volleyball and banderama, so you could catch all the action, and it was, it was great. They did a great job. We believe it's fifth grade up through 12th grade, and so it's a good show of everyone's skill level, and it's so awesome every year to see how they progress. So it's a great show. So thank you for putting that on. Glad we were able to have that again. Safe routes to school, I've been working on, in collaboration with the DPW. I'm working forward to submitting an infrastructure grant by December 1st for sidewalks at Fisher Street, along Fisher Street to Otis Street, and a little bit on West Street also, mostly curbing ramps, promoting walking, biking to school safely, getting kids across the street, getting, separating cars from children, things like that. So I'm going to go to the Select Board meeting on Tuesday, the 23rd, to ask for a letter of support from them, and the Act of Transportation Committee is going to ask for a letter of support from their committee as well. And this grant, again, is up to about $2 million, so it's a long-term project, so even if we are awarded this, planning may not even begin for a few years. So it's kind of good just to get in a queue and get it on everyone's radar. So hopefully, we will get that organized by December 1st. The Turkey Trot is happening on Saturday. Thanks to everyone who signed up and sponsored. The weather is looking chilly but sunny, so everyone's welcome to come down to the event and see the festivities. Kids Fun Run is adorable, exciting to watch.
It totally is.
Totally adorable. And I love now that Kindness Week is going to be the same week as the Turkey Trot almost every year. We can end Kindness Week with the community event, so. And the, just, those events along with Thanksgiving are just a positive reminder of everything we have to be grateful for in our community, so happy about that. And I think that's it.
Yeah. Raghu?
Yeah. From the Sustainability of Westboro, the preparation for the Energy Fair is still going on. And one of the ideas during the Energy Fair is to write a case study paper on the sustainability efforts with the heat pump and net-zero technology at Fail's School. So, we're going to work with the Sustainability of Westboro Committee and some kits and try to write this white paper.
Nice, high school students.
High school students. And share it with the community just to show how things could be.
Yeah. Yeah. Lisa?
So there have actually been some music programs at the elementary schools. I'm sure Andrew would have mentioned it. And, you know, I just think it is such a shout out to the Fine Arts Department. And if you did not see the email a couple of weeks from the Fine Arts, from the Parent Association, which is called WAFIA, it was a pretty extraordinary array of all the things that are happening with Fine Arts in Westboro Public Schools, from the youngest to the oldest, with links, you have to click on the link in the email, and then, within the array of, you know, K to 12 or pre-K to 12, there are links within that that show exactly what's happening with bands and theater and choral ensembles, and it is really detailed. If you have any interest in Fine Arts of what's happening, even for your kid's age group coming up, you know, what's available, what's out there, it's really extraordinary, so, amazing. And then I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the bus app. Where's my kid? If you did not see your email, there was an email that went out that helped you set up your bus app called Where's My Kid? And we have received feedback. For those that have a bus that's running regularly, not a double route, which is at least 90% of our buses are running on time, that app works considerably better than our last app. But for those that are still struggling with the bus driver shortage, where it is causing an impact to your bus, you know, we are sorry that that is still impacting you. It's a terrible situation, and it's very frustrating. And I agree that we must find solutions to that. I'm glad to hear we have one more driver coming on that may solve part of the problem. But the bus app itself, if you're having any troubles, you are welcome to email me because I feel that Sarah and I, who tested this prior, definitely have a handle on it, and I can answer any questions that people might have. Everyone should know Where's My Kid?
My favorite part's the name. Yes.
I was reading through it, and I was like, "If only we build an app for my college kid." I don't know, maybe.
You don't want to know.
No.
I don't want to know.
Find my phone in Life 360.
I don't have any, everyone else reported everything else that I was going to share. So, Steve, I'm ready to move on to building project updates, if you are.
I am.
Before you begin, I just want to say congratulations again on opening the new Fail's School Building to students on Monday, and I know that Steve and Amber and Mrs. Stannard and the entire team, this is a huge milestone for our district, and I just want to say congratulations.
I think we all thank you for that. And as you've heard from Amber-
And as you've heard from Amber and from Kristen, that the school was opened on Monday. There were no major glitches. And almost all of the things that we anticipated to perform, including rooms, facilities, et cetera, performed as anticipated. As you may guess, in a, in a building as complicated as that one, that we have fairly long punch list items. And they are being followed up on as we speak. It is anticipated that this work will be completed after school and on weekends until all the items have been addressed. The timing is between now and the end of the year. And there's a reason for that, being that the original contract with the builder in this phase of the work ends at the end of the year. Obviously, phase two of the project will continue and the number of staff available to do the work of administration from construction and so on will be reduced to save the district money. And so in, in that particular part of the, of the work, the, let's see, the demolition of the old building will, will occur in phase two. And part of that process is the removal of any sensitive environmental items in the building. And so when the building is turned over to the contractor and it's no longer the responsibility of the town, the contractor will start off with, with the removal of any sensitive materials in the building, as well as anything that is salvageable from the contractor's point of view. That will probably take about a month's time. So from the time that the building is turned over, roughly around the 17th of December, basically nothing will appear from the outside. And after that, the, the building itself will be demolished, basically using normal construction equipment like a backhoe and other things. The, the scheduling of the, the final work, that is the backfilling, the old foundation, grading and planting, creating the new lower parking lot, et cetera, will occur as weather allows going forward. Because we had anticipated in the original contract that the work for the school would have been occupied approximately the 1st of September with the same schedule, if you will, in terms of demolition of the old building. It had been anticipated that the building would have been down by now. Unfortunately, that didn't occur based on problems with COVID and, and other items that were pretty much beyond the building committee's control. But as they move into that new phase of the contract, the work area will be isolated from the public and from students and from the faculty so that that work can continue with inside the security fence. The hope is that we have a mild winter so that the work can proceed and that in the spring we can round up certain things. However, it, the weather, as we know, this year was terrible and certainly not good for construction. And if the same thing occurs, then the project will drag on until weather allows us to do certain things. For those of you who, who have been paying attention to our process, there, the soils on that site are horrendously bad when they get wet. They're slippery, the runoff is, is highly, contains a high amount of silt. And of course, that was our bugaboo during most of the work this year. And so in order to reuse that material, it has to be dry. And therefore, the schedule is sensitive to the weather conditions as we go forward. So pretty much that's the story with, with the final phase of Fail. And we do hope that, you know, at least by the summer, the kind of work that I just talked about will be completed. One of the other things that's going on still is the sprinkler work at Hastings. And we finished the first phase of that work last week. And we're moving into the second, second phase of that work, which is approximately the middle of the job. That work continues mostly after school and on the weekends. So that's my report for today.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Steve?
No, just congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you. But, you know, it's funny, I was thinking today that the construction meeting that we had would have been short and, and with everybody basically kind of sitting in the limelight, I guess, of the, of the occupation of the school. But as it turned out, it was as complicated as the other ones had been based on, okay, what are we going to do now? And all the lists of things that have got to be accomplished in terms of finishing up the old school, getting all the certifications and the documentation in order to, in effect, I guess, remove the responsibility of, of equipment operation and such from the contractor. And there's, there's actually the final operational tests for all the equipment. And, and I might add that we've, we finished today the, the solar documentation with the state. With that in hand, now we can go to National Grid and have them tell us, and of course, receive our money as always, and tell us what else we have to do in order to put the solar system online. It is, it is complete and ready to go. But we can't actually allow electricity degeneration until National Grid allows us to. The other thing is that the, the final circuit of the geothermal system tested okay and it's being certified by the engineers. And with, with that, the, the geothermal system is complete, except for its certification by the testing engineers. We are running on all of the circuits except one, which is this last one to be approved. And in the meantime, while we're doing all this stuff, we had been operating the heating system at Fails on the propane backup system. And so all of that checked out and did well. So all the big stuff is done and being certified. And, you know, we keep our fingers crossed that it all works out as it seems to have so far, which is in good shape. Thanks.
So a quick question, I'm sorry. You've sort of sparked some questions there.
Yeah, that's good.
So the old building being demolished.
Yeah.
It has to be prepped, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And that it will not happen December 17th, correct?
Yeah, it won't happen before that. And in fact, until it can all be isolated and maintained, nothing will happen.
Okay.
And it, you know, the program as it's set up will not be detrimental to the kids or the faculty or for that matter, anybody else.
Or the parking? I think people will ask about the parking.
Yeah, that's a good question because it came up today. And, and basically the, the upper parking lot is, is completed except for the final asphalt coat up there. The lower parking lot will be isolated with a steep ramp being inside the construction zone. And so there'll only be one way in and out of the lower parking lot. But the lower parking lot is isolated from, from construction. And a new, new construction fence will be created around the work area that remains.
So there is parking in the upper lot, the lower lot, and the buses come through the upper lot?
Yep.
Correct? Okay.
Yep.
Great.
In the final pattern, they'll, where the school is now will be a circular, I don't know what you would call it.
Right, eventually the upper parking lot will hold the flow of parent drop off and people come in going, and the buses will come through the lower loop.
Okay.
So they'll come in and they'll come in through the lower drop off. And parents that want to do drop off in the morning will go through the upper loop.
Okay.
So it's a nice traffic pattern. And the early stage look at the entry of this week shows that, you know, it's got nice capacity up there. And we were able to pull all the buses through and do arrival and dismissal there smoothly without buses being backed up on the street, which we're kind of worried about because that's a shorter loop than will be the eventual, you know, drop off loop for buses. So I think we gained capacity to pull parking off, off of the street and other things that were a part of the project we really wanted to achieve.
So logistically, it's all operational as needed.
As it is now.
As it is right now. That's fantastic. And the video welcoming Fail students was pretty extraordinary from Mary Ann Standard.
Yeah, they all knew which way to turn. They came right through the door and they went right, left, right, left. Because you could tell their parents had prepped them. They all came in and they were just like spilling off left and right. It was very cute. So it went really well.
I'm hearing feedback that it's very, it's quite a beautiful place, so.
Yeah, there are some photos. I saw, I think maybe Mrs. Standard had posted them and it was really.
It's a very big deal.
Yeah, I'm excited.
It's great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
So it's congratulations, but it's also one step further. Because there are many other steps to go.
Like all these things, it's, it's one step further.
Yep, yep.
But it's a big step. And certainly we're, we're all pleased with, with the outcome as it is right now. And of course, there's both inside and outside punch list items to complete. And, and many of them, that is planting and other stuff obviously isn't going to happen until the spring.
Yeah, thanks. All right, we are at the portion of our meeting for citizens' requests. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to make a statement to the school committee? Can you just show your hands if you, if you wish to do that? Okay, so before. No, well, we're okay. I appreciate that. It's okay that we're a little ahead of our agenda. And if other people do arrive, I'm happy to include them to make their statement. But. So I just want to remind everyone that we do have a policy regarding citizens' requests. And some important pieces of that policy include that you must be a current resident of Westboro. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. And written comments longer than three minutes can be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. So you're welcome to send me additional comments in writing now or via email sometime after the meeting. And I can share them with the rest of the committee members. And public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. And our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. So come on forward to the, you get to sit in the big chair at the desk. And yeah, if you could just state your full name and your street address for the record.
Diane McPherson, 32 Fisher Street.
And can you just make sure that microphone is on and just say it again?
Diane McPherson, 32 Fisher Street.
That's great. Okay, you can go ahead.
Hi, y'all.
Hi. Hi, Diane.
So I will try to do a minute on each. I have parent thought, my education background thoughts, and then just a community member thought. As a parent, technically neither, the decision from asking, flexible masking is not going to affect me yet. I do have one that would gladly shed it. I do have one that if it was going to affect her team at Milpon, we would have already had a very comprehensive, you know, plan to meet her social emotional needs. She has a lot of anxieties. She's already struggling to learn in this environment. She has just fears. Again, it's, she's one child out of how many? Don't even, too many? And so the other thing I know about being a parent, especially on that first day of kindergarten, I knew I have to trust you. I have to trust you. I have no other choice but to trust you and to trust my children and to trust that at school where I am not, that the teachers and the staff and the children are making this work. And my children are coming home and make, they're, they're seeing it work. So I guess my one fear is why, why throw a wrench in that? If, but again, my children. I also know that other children in every family has their own story. I have talked to people who have the opposite story. You know, everyone feels it's either detrimental. I think we all agree there is, you know, the pros and cons to it all. So my educator thought was accommodations. I mean, people know if there's a problem with my family and with my children, I'm going to reach out, I'm going to ask for those supports. And it really kind of boggles my mind that, and I, I am going to just give you guys the credit, that those accommodations are already happening. If a kid is really struggling with a mask and you're clearly not learning, I'm assuming that someone is taking that child out to give a mask break. So there's my educator thoughts. I kind of already believe flexible masking is happening. They're not eating, they're not wearing masks at snack, they're not wearing masks at lunch, they're not wearing masks outside. So I know I'm one of those people that says, nothing bad's happened yet? Great, let's keep it that way. But again, my trust goes to, I think the, the main reason why I came here today is more out of being a community member and having to be a part of these conversations taking place online mostly through the grapevines, through things I don't want to see coming into my mailbox or my inbox. And just how I think that stress really pushed all these people to be here. God, there'd be more by the chatter. And it just really disheartens me that, again, it's just me and Lauren. And not the people who were trying to say that toddlers wearing masks was akin to child abuse. That's enough to throw me right over an edge. So I don't know if there is any way there's a public statement that could be put out that like, again, and I think you do it. You, you trust us, trust us. You don't have to treat each other so poorly in order to get what you want. And I don't think it's really about what they want. No, no, I keep my judgments aside. But it feels more like there's a fight behind, there's a fight to be had rather than a concern to be addressed. And I hope that you'll be concerning, addressing the concern and not, I guess, responding to the fight. But I would like it somewhat acknowledged that the fight is not necessary. It's, that's the damaging part for me.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Come on up.
My name's Lauren McDonald. I live at 118 West Main Street. First of all, I want to say thank you so much for the app. Even though my bus is a bus that does a double route.
No.
I now know that he's doing a double route. And that I don't care that he's late. It is what it is. I understand the struggle, but I just, now I know. And then, of course, I'm here about masks. I feel like the decision has probably already been decided, which, that's fine. But with us getting the little ones finally vaccinated, if we could just wait a month or two and then they could all get to be together again without masks and be safe. So that's just, just asking. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you both for your feedback tonight. We appreciate it. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who has emailed us in the past few weeks. Many people sent in comments and thoughts via email because they couldn't make it to the meeting tonight. So we continue to hear a range of concerns and thoughts about the mask waiver. So thank you.
Can I make one comment? I know that we normally don't comment, but I wanted to just clarify that there's no way we could have made a decision already because we haven't discussed it here. It's, and we don't talk amongst each other about what we think because it's an open meeting law. We don't do that. And I know from what you said that there's an assumption that we do, but we do not. And so there's no way the decision has been made because we haven't discussed it or voted on it. So keep that in mind. And I know that's hard to imagine, but, because there's a lot of chatter out there, so.
Yeah. Yep, so it's a policy of a committee like this that this is our business meeting. So this is the only time the five of us can sit and have a discussion about anything. So this is where we make decisions and you all get to be a part of it, which is pretty remarkable. So thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. Thanks. All right, again, we continue to be a little ahead of schedule, but I don't mind. So we're going to move into the next agenda item, which is the COVID protocol discussion. And something I want to say, kind of starting off this discussion, is that the school committee is here to create policy. That's one of the big responsibilities that we have. We only actually have several responsibilities and one of them is to create policy. The superintendent is charged with supervising the implementation of these policies. So I'm going to recommend that we use our typical protocol of looking at a policy to consider any changes and amendments at this meeting and then vote on that policy at the following meeting, which would be on December 1st. So for the school committee to consider any amendments to the masking. So for the school committee to consider any amendments to the masking policy, I would like to hear from the superintendent, who is responsible for that implementation and who is gathering the data from many different groups. You know, we hear from parents and, you know, some groups, but you are... You have committees and meetings that you're meeting with in the district to gather that data and get that sense of a timeline that makes sense for everyone. So first, I would like to hear from the superintendent about it.
Thank you. I think... I appreciate the clarification around the policy and implementation structure. I think that a plan to discuss, again, the amendment to your policy in and of itself was a simple move, but it is an important part for you to move forward in order for us to implement any changes. And I believe that reviewing it tonight as a context of this discussion and voting on it on December 1st is appropriate. So I appreciate that. So I thought what we would do is I'd like to take time to talk a little bit about process and feedback thus far. From there, I'd like to walk you through implementation of a move to more flexible masking at Gibbons and the high school. And then I'll kind of outline my general recommendations. So I'm going to talk a little bit about how we are, where we are, kind of what... Who we've been talking with and working with, what that implementation would look like, and then when I believe and how I believe we should make that change. So I'm going to do it in three pieces. We can talk along the way. If I feel like I want you to wait, I might say, let's wait. But, you know, typically, I'll give you a sense of queuing for that. You have a document that I'm going to ask Daniel to open up, and I'll use it as a benchmark. It's a document that replicates some of the updates that we've shared out to the community through parents and through faculty. And then I've been bringing that document with me to use at the safety committee, the labor board, the leadership meeting, and looking at then rolling the feedback into creating an implementation set of guidelines that would then eventually be shared out as we look towards implementation. So you'll see that it's marked draft. It indicates exactly what you've just talked about, which is the school committee is the group that would indicate the move towards flexible masking. And then I would guide you in implementation with recommendations and the policy implementation work. We have, as people recognize, I think they feel like the decision has been made to comment on things that were just said, because we applied for the waiver and we received it. So the door was opened. We walked through it. We received an acknowledgement that we could indeed move to flexible masking at Gibbons and the high school. And I think our clientele across district, faculty, and families are now waiting to see what our next steps will be. We continue to be a community showing a strong commitment to vaccination protocols and collaboration. We have a highly, highly enjoyable, smart, and compliant group of young people that we work with, and our buildings are running very, very smoothly this year. I want to recognize that we have really focused on going slowly to go far safely and that working together, we've continued to look at data. Worcester County and Middlesex Counties have both remained in the kind of higher target zone of cases. We sit kind of in that neighborhood area. We then also look at the data of just Westboro. And I think it's certainly important to recognize that this data guides seeing that while being within those two counties, we've continued to maintain cases at the community level in the mid-20s. So I think, you know, we think in terms of informationally, it's just a data point that we will continue to study and discuss. And I'll highlight that a little bit as we look at, you know, in going to the Board of Health and to different groups, there's different lenses that people use to kind of assess and understand data from which they garner, you know, their feelings and opinions about how we should process. All of those are legitimate and grounded in data discussions with different lenses on what people lift and see as most important. I think it's important that we recognize that there aren't a lot of, you know, off-base pieces of feedback or opinions in any of this. I think it's all garnered from looking at that data and having a response, how comfortable you are with it in terms of your own actions. So this data will guide how we move forward with families and faculty, and we will use it accordingly to keep ourselves updated. If you scroll down, you will see that this is updated as of today. So you have the data benchmarks for the high school in Gibbons for both faculty and students. And you can see at the high school that there have been four cases across the span of the year, three that were vaccinated breakthrough cases and one unvaccinated person. And at the student level, you can see that since the start of the year, you've had six vaccinated breakthrough cases, three of which just popped up this morning, and four unvaccinated cases. So that's the trajectory of the year at the high school to date as of this morning. You see at Gibbons, you have five cases at the faculty and zero henceforth moving forward from there, and one student at Gibbons and zero as of now. So that's the data benchmark. It's just an update of current to today. If you scroll down a little further, as I said, I want to indicate the timeline shows you a series of discussions with various groups and people. The labor board, which is a collaborative group that we use for negotiations, for faculty support decisions, for guiding of the district and collaboration. Lisa sits on that, and so does Steve. And we come together and we work to stay in relationship with the strong faculty that leads our district. We also have then a safety committee, a board of health, the leadership team. So over the last, kind of since December... Since October 5th, I've been in a series of active meetings with all those various groups to continue to look at discussing and getting feedback. And then you see all of that bringing us up to the last communication that went out to families was on the 15th, and labor board discussions last week, and now here we are today. So I want to call out a couple... Some high points of learning from those different groups and just acknowledge, as we have, that I think it's important to recognize the range of assessment of that data around safety and health for moving forward. So I want to recognize that the board of health, which is a group we continue to be in relationship with and collaborate with, prefers that we remain masked. While they did not take a formal vote on that, I would crystallize that as the kind of the general overview of their feedback to us. And they didn't give us any particular target dates where they were comfortable with us being unmasked. And we didn't come to, you know, again, their general recommendations were that they, I would say, two of the three of the board, and again, it wasn't a formal vote, continued to feel that we should remain masked. Our head of nursing, Judy Noonan, who I deeply respect and work collaboratively with continually, probably, and Daniel, one of the people I talked to the most in the last year and a half, recommends not considering unmasking until after the holidays. That's not definitive from her, but it is in the sense that she's not sure she wants to unmask after the holidays either. But I believe that her clear, kind of like, benchmark in terms of voice that I want to articulate out of respect to her strong guidance and leadership in this district, as she feels very strongly that she would prefer that we look at the earliest to doing so after the holidays. Also want to acknowledge other people that are working with the director of the board of health, supports our plan of implementation and looking at how we want to move forward, the things I'm going to share with you tonight. She still is most comfortable moving forward after winter break, which she sees as a better implementation of the plans that I've been able to update her on as they've evolved. Those are people that have provided strong guidance to us over the last year and a half. I think it's important to call their voice out and to recognize their feelings around the best timing and thoughts around moving forward. I think it's also to recognize that there are a range of feedback and perspectives. We've certainly heard those from a range of faculty and families, that there are faculty and families and students ready to move forward to unmask and thought we would start the year unmasked, who feel a delay in the perspective that DESE changed the structure in the opening days before school and unanticipated, left them feeling like, and when will we move forward? We know that Hopkinton has moved forward, and we know that those data points create the sense of expectation that for people that are ready to unmask, who feel that they got their children vaccinated, took the risk and responsibility of making that decision, want their child have the benefits of choice. So I just want to acknowledge in a summarization, I guess, the types of things that we all know we have heard. So that brings us where we are tonight. All of those groups, that feedback and that information, I think it's important now to kind of walk through the structure of what the implementation would look like to move to flexible masking. It's really a shift in one perspective practice, masking. It... You know, it's not a complicated implementation. It's important to keep it clear and streamlined, and I want to share that with you tonight. This is the most recently updated as of this afternoon, and there are a variety of eyes on it. So I'm going to scroll down and have Daniel step us through that. So general expectations, some people have already seen this early in, and a couple of the dynamics. We expect all faculty and students to have a mask available at all times. Masks will remain available in offices and in classrooms as a ready pickup at all times in the culture of schooling moving forward. All students and faculty should assume that they will mask during some parts of the school day, either in a classroom or in an event or at a large assembly. We will feel that the culture will say that administrators will direct and manage when masks can and should be worn. Any classroom requiring masking will be noted with a sign. So if you're coming into a classroom and there's a guideline for masking regardless of whatever reason, that would be noted on the door. Students take their mask out as they enter, participate through that class session in their masks. Masking will be required for all staff and students who are in the nursing office. Any unvaccinated individuals per DESE guidelines as they currently stand must remain masked. The guidelines as we currently have them will remain the same. The students who feel unwell or demonstrating any symptoms will be sent to the nurse. That's during the school day. The most essential guideline is anybody demonstrating symptoms or not feeling well, we know the line, should stay home. An important guideline for wellness for all types of illness, not just COVID. All students will wear masks on the bus until DESE state guidelines change. It's essential, and I feel confident in stating this, that students and faculty will continue to maintain, encourage, and support a culture of supportive, respectful relationships around masking. I think that as well as a values-based district, we will maintain privacy and guidelines while actively monitoring mask-wearing as required by us. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go down through the implementation phase. So then there will be some special circumstances for masking. You can scroll down, Daniel. After you make an approval and we move forward based upon my timeline right there for implementation, we will, I expect, mirror the effective practices of masking for a week after vacations to make sure that in transition back, at least through the Thanksgiving or winter breaks, to make sure that we've got a coverage gap of when people might have traveled as an extra protection. Again, they would mask then after winter break. Those were guidelines that we discussed that people felt that knowing that you were going to move forward for this discussion, that the people in the groups we were working with felt very strongly that we have in there as noted guidelines so that their voices there around what their thoughts would be around making sure we sustained that practice. Sports guidelines are going to continue to be a singularly contained, different event because of the MIAA, because of the placing in different schools and where they are with masking, and the whole set of guidelines for the level of exertion that you're doing on a court with breathing. So there's going to be sport by sport and stage by stage winter athletics. As of now, the guideline that it stands from DESE is that you are currently masked for all sports. So we will keep everyone updated on winter sports implementation, but that will be guided by really building-based updates from us with affirmation, if we can get it, from MIAA. But as of now, they're kind of taking a knee on it, so we're just going to have to wait and see. Anybody will respectfully mask if requested by an administrator. Obviously, that's just the culture of our district. If you scroll down a little bit more, fine arts events, where we have large gatherings and audiences, that the audience will mask through January 10th before we do any review of that to see whether it merits a change. And I think it's important to note for faculty and families that some classrooms will have required masking guidelines related to approved medical circumstances, either for a student or for a faculty memory, which member, which will be certainly managed privately. The school nurse will manage working on student-based issues, and the human resources director will manage faculty-based discussions. That follows a protocol that we utilized over the last year and a half. And, you know, those are already outreach documentations and discussions that are underway. I think that everybody needs to understand that there will be circumstances where you might spontaneously hear that you need to wear masks, and they'll just be part of the culture as we move forward. So let's just talk a little bit about some of the more layered implementation procedures. I hope the first section gives you a picture of what it looks like, kind of seamlessly moving in and out of their day as they do now. You're putting a mask on, you're taking it off, you're running your schedule, you're having your day. I imagine as well that we will continue to maintain outdoor breaks and other types of things that we can that are all kind of a cool, appropriate part of the culture now where people are realizing like, I like breathing outdoor air during the day. Let's go outside. And we really will try to maintain as much of that structure as well.
Question? There was a question that came up about using the term optional masking versus flexible masking. And to us, they mean the same thing, but by using the term flexible, I feel like it defines that back and forth more than just saying optional.
Yeah. Optional means you would have the choice. Flexible means I have the choice. You're in a school, and the administrative team will own your choice. It's a school. So it's not like a student can optionally choose. If it's a masked classroom, you know, they'll mask. So flexible means we'll guide that flexibility with our protocols and make sure that they can flexibly mask in and out of their day based upon purposeful planning. But I think flexible is a better use of the word.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
And it shows there's a gradual move towards masking, unmasking. It... I mean, it reminds me of the analogy... The analogy that comes to mind is no right on red. Massachusetts was the last state to have right on red at a red light. And yet, when they made it a law, there were no right on red signs everywhere, every intersection. And I say this because when I look at those that you just listed, it shows a flexible masking process where there are many instances where there will be no flexible masking.
Right.
And so I see that as a transition place where you put a new rule into place that will be so gradual that we will seamlessly move in a direction of flexible masking.
Yeah, and all of our work is based on respectful relationships and layers of privacy and knowledge and living together in community. And very few other organizations come together where you have that many people together all day, day in and day out, in the construct of public school education. It's a unique structure. It's beautiful. It's powerful, and it's complicated. So all those things are true as, you know, we move forward. As you look at the implementation procedures, I want to be clear...
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay.
No, no, go, go, go.
I had a parent whose child was immunocompromised and could not get vaccinated for medical reasons. And she was worried that if we... That her childhood could be in danger in that case. So looking at this section, I think, is what I think. I just want to confirm. Some classrooms will have required mask guidelines related to approved medical circumstances. In such cases where the child goes into the classroom, everybody in the classroom gets masks.
So there will definitely be a protocol discussion for that because there will be a range of, again, just as we did, I'll use a faculty example. I mean, there's a range of private protocol, what they call kind of a... An informational, kind of a forensic interview where you basically sit with the person, understand the range of need, look at it against the criterias, and come up with a plan. Sometimes that plan is like, we can do this for you, not that, or we can do this, or we think you should do that. And it's where we come to that kind of respectful, knowledge-based. So there will be a layer of that for students as well, and we'll start working on providing opportunities. Our nurses already know our medically fragile students and students that have a range of medical needs, and they'll start a strand of outreach to those families to have conversation. And just as there's... And there's layers there. There's...
I hope those decisions are based on medical necessities, not necessarily anything else.
Exactly. Respectfully, they have to be.
Yeah.
I mean, and I think that's the way that... I think that we managed it very thoughtfully during the earlier phases of COVID implementation. It wasn't easy, but we managed it well, working thoughtfully forward with both families, but also with faculty around medical documentation and then against a set of criteria. So we'll use that again moving forward.
Maybe a recommendation from the concerned doctor to say?
Yeah, I think, again, I think...
That input to the plan will be very valuable.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think, again, the forensic kind of interview process requires often a back and forth with doctors and physicians. forth with doctors and physicians around pieces of information, and that's why it's handled by, you know, within that FERPA privacy of the nursing team.
And it's, I was gonna say, and it can be flexible, so it could be like the student and everyone at their table, or the class, you know what I mean? Like there's certain ranges of what is going to be protected.
I mean, it could be varying levels of risk that a doctor can assess and say, okay, the risk level for this child is low, so just six feet around should be fine. Those decisions should come from medical practitioners.
Right. I think as we look at all of it, there's, you know, for a small portion of those that live in the school setting on the faculty and the student side, the need for that level of thoughtful conversation, I think, and I think, again, we navigated it before and we'll navigate it forward now. So as we look at that, let's look towards the management of implementing who's in a mask and who's not. There have been some questions about that. Structurally, no, wait, go back, Daniel, sorry, right there, that's where I want to be, thanks. We are committed to making sure that we have 100% of current data managed on student and faculty vaccination information. We have 100% currently on faculty, and we are currently looking for, as I talked about before, student by student, the gap, the students who may have a SNAP where we know the vaccination status because they submitted it, and then there's a portion of students who may be vaccinated but didn't submit it or might be unvaccinated, and that's the group of students we're interviewing and checking in with now via Google Docs and email. And again, that's being handled privately through nurses and the admin team who will manage that. So as we look at that, again, that information is managed at the appropriate level, the administrative, at the building level, the administrative team of principals and assistant principals. So at the high school, that would be Brian, Jessica, and Matt with the school nurse would be informed about monitoring and managing random checks on those that need to be masked because they're unvaccinated. At Gibbons, it would be Jack and Pat and the school nurse. So, and I want to be clear, the school nurses are not in charge of that monitoring, they're just in charge of providing the appropriate information to the admin team so that they can take that responsibility. That will take the form of random checks. Again, our faculty know that our admin team know the students, they know their buildings, they move in and out of classrooms seamlessly and through hallways every day, and each of them will take an individual set of students that they need to monitor and be accountable for being able to check that they are appropriately implementing their masking guidelines. I feel like it provides the appropriate balance of privacy and structure and accountability, and I feel confident that moving into any phase of flexible masking, that we have the appropriate balance of teachers not needing to monitor and police that information, the appropriate people are in charge of it and will monitor it and be accountable to me to make sure that I feel it's going smoothly.
And just to be clear, that requirement, that unvaccinated staff and students remain masked is a state requirement. And we have no power over changing that at this time, so.
And again, at some point, that might shift at the state level, but I don't anticipate that happening anytime soon, so, you know, this school year, we'll have to see the trajectory of that. We will continue the contact tracing and test day protocols. The shift of contact tracing will move to six feet. Currently, we're contact tracing at three feet where a mask. We'll return to the six-foot guideline that we utilized last year. So we'll do the six-foot contact tracing. Close contacts who are vaccinated will monitor for symptoms. Close contacts who are unvaccinated will quarantine or participate in test and stay. That's our current procedure, we will maintain it. Interestingly, these are the exact protocols that Hopkinton are implementing right now, and they feel that they're doing so successfully, and they've been using flexible masking now for, I've been talking pretty regularly with Carol, they're at three weeks through the close of this week, they've had one case at the high school. They're using this protocol and feel it's effective and manageable and respectful to the current protocols that are in place.
And so does that mean like test and stay is sort of expanded to those within that six feet, so if it contact tracing?
So the current model for test and stay is you test and stay if you're, it's for unvaccinated individuals that are close contacts.
Okay, got it. Unless you're developed symptoms, right?
Right. And then you're monitoring for symptoms. If there's any question, the nursing staff applies test and stay within that circle. In most cases, you're monitoring for symptoms and then they're test and staying any unvaccinated individuals. Now mostly, for us right now, that's occurring at the level of which you see the most intensive test and stay circle is at the elementary level because none of them are vaccinated, so you have to test and stay the whole class. So it's cumbersome, whereas like if you look at the model for Carol, or even at our high school or Gibbons now, you might be test and staying two kids that are unvaccinated that were in a close contact circle, and the others are just monitoring for symptoms.
Okay, so thank you for clarifying that, because I just wanted to make sure this wasn't gonna like increase the workload for our nurses in terms of implementing that program at the middle school and high school. I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll have to feel it out and see how it goes. I mean, again, I think, it depends on, you know, how implementation goes. Certainly, if something got to some stage of not being manageable, then it would mean we would need to return to masks. So, you know, there's, that's where the data is really the benchmark guideline that you're utilizing, and because you have, you know, into the high eighties in terms of your vaccination rate, you're mostly doing a small number of people that are in that contact circle for test and stay, so it's a tighter circle.
This addresses Dr. Mayor's point from the Board of Health about that there isn't a policy. There is not an actual policy because there never needed to be a policy about unmasked vaccinated students. So the change is from three feet to six feet, and Carol, so far, at Hopkinton, is using that change, so that somewhat addresses a piece of it that says, okay, we're putting in a new policy that's stricter than the current guideline.
So, again, we'll proceed. We've modified our policies at different times based upon the responsiveness of what we've found when we've been, like at Mill Pond, we tweaked seating and did other things at different times. We have a variety of protocols that we feel we can utilize to, you know, manage effectively the status of where we are. So I'm going to keep us moving, I don't want to be on this too long tonight, I want to keep us just kind of thoughtfully presenting this, and then I want to summarize. So if you scroll down, you'll just see that it finalizes implementation of masks, special masking relating to faculty, and then if you go down, you'll see this is the data cycle that we utilized all last year. It basically maintains a commitment to posting the weekly data, to check in with the Director of the Board of Health, weekly to look at our data, calling for consult as needed, and taking responsive guidance based upon our data. We'll continue to post our data online as we currently are and keep everybody very transparently updated as to where we are. So that kind of captures a framework of an implementation plan. I think that it's.
Question?
Yep.
So we collect all this data and put it on data dashboard, right? And what triggers an action? If the trend goes up, do we know?
So I would say, again, I feel confident that the structure of the protocol we used last year was to seek out the consult of, I went to Dr. Ehrlich at the Board of Health, and I said, here's the data. I sat with the Director of the Board of Health, it would usually be Judy, me, or just Judy, to say, here's what we're seeing, here's our case upload, here's what we think we should do, what do you think? And took their guidance on suggestions for whether or not we needed to close a class, close a model, put on masks, and we work in relationship with them to utilize the data to respond appropriately. Currently, we're already doing that. We interacted with them about Mill Pond, made the appropriate shifts when we had what looked like a class outbreak there, and managed it effectively, and actually, you know, we've had very appropriate kind of ongoing responses in those classrooms since then. So the model will be as we did before, there is, and I think Dr. Ehrlich captured it for me most explicitly, there is no exact number, it's the science of looking at, is it in a room, is it in a building, is it, was it transmitted at school, was there a reasonable understanding that it was a party or a group or a gathering? So, you know, they used kind of a forensic approach to look at the data and to be supportive to us, and I think I want to give a huge amount of respectful acknowledgement to the strength of their guidance really helping us steadfastly move forward last year successfully. So I found my partnership with Dr. Ehrlich and the Board of Health very meaningful and important when he was chairing, and we will continue to move forward with the Board of Health in the same way.
In the final analysis, it's the school committee. So with advice from superintendent and from other sources, including the town Board of Health, we make the decision whether we change this or not.
And I think, you know, again, I think that the structure of the design of the relationship work has been effective. So at this point, I've gone through two of the three pieces with you, the timeline that brought us here, the data and the discussions, the look at an implementation plan, and I'd like to talk to you about my recommendations to move forward. So I'm going to, I think at this point, after a lot of listening and a lot of talking and a lot of thinking, I met extensively today with Jack Foley and Brian Callahan and a range of people, I think, I applaud the idea that you vote on December 1st to amend your masking policy, to open up the opportunity to move to flexible masking. We then would move forward and monitor our cases and watch our data. I am recommending at this time that we implement masking being flexible January 10th. So I think it's important to acknowledge that for me, and I'll explain my rationale for that, we've heard from people that there are people that aren't ready to unmask who feel that the holiday structures could increase our cases. We have people that have been ready to unmask and have asked us to move forward who feel they've earned the opportunity in having gotten that vaccination to gain that flexibility. I want to acknowledge that in giving them a clear date, that we acknowledge that we will move forward, that we will begin at that date, short of the state taking away that right from us, I would implement on the 10th, which would be one week after the return from the winter break. I think it acknowledges that those that have asked us to wait are people we care about and respect who are currently running a pretty spectacular year at schools for us, our faculty, and our students are really beginning to get adjusted and get their feet under them, and I see such good things going on in our schools. I want this next phase to come with the most people on board to move forward with it. And we have always grounded our perspective in collaboration, decision-making, and meeting in the middle, recognizing that it leaves people dissatisfied on both ends of the spectrum. There are people that want to unmask right now, they will be compromising that they will be masked for several more weeks. There are people that feel like they're not ready to unmask now, and it gives them several more weeks to prepare and recognize, bringing them forward to a date that is, you know, within line to the target of the recommendations from the group that I highlighted to at the beginning, the Director of the Board of Health, the Director of our head nurse, Judy Noonan, and people I respect their opinions and want to acknowledge that I think, for me as a superintendent of schools, looking at my faculty and staff, I believe the best recommendation to represent, bringing them forward successfully would be that we would start on January 10th. So that's kind of where I am right now. I feel that what would be helpful would be just to, I wanted to state that publicly, I wanted to be clear, I want to be definitive in dates, and I also want to be clear around the recommendations for the design and layout of implementation. It gives us time to meet those goals with, you know, comfortable time to meet with people and to accomplish our holidays, not upset or angry coming in, people have had so much emotional disruption. Being upset or angry about a change we make, you know, steaming right into Thanksgiving and winter break for people doesn't feel like good social, emotional wellness to me. I feel that for people that, you know, don't feel ready for that, it's happening right at the trigger time of the holidays, and I just want to be respectful of so many layers of where we are. And I also feel like it makes good sense trending to watch our numbers and come in on the 10th. So that's my rationale in terms of my core recommendation. It gives you two weeks to think about it, and then also to let any feedback, you know, circulate, and then, again, you vote the shift in masking and I own that implementation, and I want to make sure that we keep planning forward and moving forward.
Sure. So I think if we could just have like a discussion among ourselves or just a reaction to that plan, and then we can finish up this agenda item, just looking at the masking, current masking policy, and just think about what language needs to change if we were to adopt this, you know, take a vote at our next meeting and move forward with the guidelines that you have set forth. So, I mean, I have a few reactions to what you've laid out. So at our last meeting, I stated that I didn't think it was necessary to mask after Thanksgiving, but in full transparency, my thinking around that has shifted as I continue to listen to a range of stakeholders and also to the guidance of medical professionals and what they recommend for the health and safety of all of our community members. For me, however, the medical guidance comes into conflict with another crisis of health and safety, and that is the mental health of our students, particularly at the middle school and high school level. I strive to make student-focused decisions, so I also want to take into consideration the mental health of our students, all of our students. Some are not doing their best learning right now with a mask, and others will not do their best learning due to heightened anxiety if we move to flexible masking. So I was originally frustrated because it seemed like this was something we could have done this third week of school, like we were really poised and ready to open school for two weeks with masks and then be ready to move to some flexible masking, especially at the high school before the state stepped in. And so originally, I was frustrated at this like slow pace that we've been approaching the use of this waiver, but now I'm actually glad that we're moving slowly to reach this decision. I did watch the Board of Health meeting Monday evening. They did raise concerns about flexible masking before and after the Thanksgiving break. They recommended that we not implement the waiver until at least one week after Thanksgiving break, so that students are masked before and after the break. And so those are just my thoughts.
I think it's prudent to.
There we go.
Okay. I think it's prudent to go one week after the holidays, we have waited so long. If you remember last year, the COVID cases went up during the holiday times, so not, we are living in a different situation. This year, I totally recognize that, but there's still kids who are not vaccinated and faculty was not vaccinated. So why put anyone, even one person, at risk when we can avoid that? So I think, I think the bank for the buck is there to push this. Anyway, half of the time during the holidays, the schools will be closed, so we're talking about another half, so I think, I think the bank for the buck is there to push this to January 10th. I think it's prudent.
I can go or wait. What Steve says.
Oh, sure.
We have significant knowledge of the effectiveness of a vaccine to reduce danger of people becoming sick with COVID-19 over the last 21 months. The vaccine rate in Westboro schools and the town as a whole is 86%. In the age group that we're talking about in Westboro, over 95% of those individuals have been vaccinated. Vaccinated people do test positive, are able to recover in few impacts, with few impacts, and do recover in a short period of time. All people five and older are now able to be vaccinated and vaccines are available, the availability is significant, local and easy to obtain. We may be unmasked in the school system, is now determined by DESI, subject to an application of a local school district which must meet DESI criteria as a prerequisite to filing an application. DESI must approve the request. As most know, DESI has approved our request to unmask, subject to DESI criteria, for the middle school and the high school only. This meeting tonight is to discuss any action the school committee may take to approve the associated guidelines of DESI. The action of the school district is in responsibility, is a responsibility to protect students in its care. This includes all students. Now it is clear the vaccine rates in the district are above DESI's criteria, and the district has been approved by the school committee to determine an action in this regard. Our action will only apply to the middle and the high school. Those who have chosen to be vaccinated have chosen to risk, to reduce the risk of COVID and therefore have resolved the issue of risk of vaccination side effects versus the cl-. clear protection that vaccines have shown over the year the vaccines have been available. There are those who cannot take the vaccine due to other medical issues and who must be protected, and that includes students and faculty. Finally, there are those who have chosen not to take the vaccine and are at risk to become COVID-19 infected and potentially to infect others. Local progression of this information is to vote to remove masks from those who meet the DESI criteria and to protect those who have not been vaccinated, who remain at risk of COVID, who have chosen not to be vaccinated. DESI has provided a protocol for each of these instances while at the same time allowing the school committee to act on this subject. It is logical for those who have chosen to be vaccinated to reduce the risk of COVID to return to a normal environment without masks. In that action, I believe learning will be improved and a return to a form of normalcy is being requested by many. For those who have not received the vaccine or who are at risk of COVID due to medical conditions, must be protected with our understanding of the methods available to us, which is to continue to wear a mask. Based on my understanding of the decision's scope, we are allowed by DESI, by DESI's decision, I would vote for the availability of vaccinated students and faculty to unmask. With those who have not been vaccinated and who are at risk of COVID, will continue to wear a mask. Further, I would vote to allow those faculty members who are at risk and wear a mask in class to require students in those classes to be required to wear a mask in such classes. Finally, I reserve to the school committee the right and responsibility to require the district to order masks to be worn upon an outbreak of COVID cases in the school should that event occur. And as a as a part of my vote, I would include in the motion, should we do it today or in the future, that masks be worn until January 10th. And further, did the decision be considered in a similar way after January 10th, should the data indicate that such a need to return to masks would be required? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. You can go.
Okay. My response to the new recommendation is that I'm a little bit surprised. I'm surprised from our previous meeting here. And I'm surprised because things change so quickly to a point a date in the future feels impractical, because we don't know what the numbers will look like at that point. I think people will also say, isn't it time for the 12 to 18 year olds to get boosters? And after that, won't they say, isn't it time for the five to 11 year olds to get boosters? Isn't it time for the adults to get boosters again? Meaning that there's really no right time, is what I would say about that. But what's also confusing to me is when I think about how quickly we've had to shift in the past 20 months. As a school committee decision making, we've had to shift very quickly, and we've been able to shift really quickly. I'm not understanding why we would make a decision about January 10th versus December 1st, look to see where we are and make a decision on December 1st. And that's because even my own thinking changes so quickly based upon what's happening in our community, within our schools, within the Worcester County, within the state, within the country, what happens after the holidays, during the holidays, after the holidays, before, after. So in other words, everything happens so fast. So it's very confusing to me to think about setting a date for that far forward versus coming to the next meeting and seeing where we are. I've thought very hard, long and hard about, I've watched the, you know, my must see TV right now is Board of Health meetings. And I've now watched them both twice, the last two twice, and why I really want to understand what each of them was saying. One is an epidemiologist. He's an expert in that field. He felt that we should balance and weigh the risks, the risks of physical versus mental health. There's a lot of data coming out of the case study of Hopkinton Public Schools. They used the state rates of vaccination, which Steve just quoted for Westboro. I saw the exact same chart on their website, and theirs is at 88% and greater than 95% in the two age groups that Steve just quoted in our own town as being greater than 95% in both age categories. There was a lot of sense from the Hopkinton students, first of all, that only half are using the flexible masking, that there's about half that are staying masked and half that are not. And I think one of the most important pieces that comes out of that is that we are hardwired for connection. And in order to connect with people, facial cues are part of the emotion and connection that we have. People felt like they had more connection with their teachers. They noticed a lot of unexpected social and emotional benefits. They're communicating more than before when when they look at somebody beyond their, just their eyes. ELL students, English Language learners, find it much easier to understand a second language when they're seeing teachers' lips. Some students were surprised by the morale boost because they felt more connected. I think that those aspects are what Dr. Urolik may, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, were talking about the balance between physical and emotional well being when he was talking about his decision to allow for flexible masking. I also heard Dr. Walsh talking about data from last year, although the data does not include vaccination, and comparing those two felt a little bit off. But he's also the same doctor that last year, I believe, spoke about mental health concerns and making sure that we get into our schools full time. He was that doctor on the Board of Health that said this, and I appreciated, you know, I really respect all three of them. Dr. Mayer wanted to have daily case rates down to 10 per 100,000, which happened this past week. I was listening, and I want them to know that I, this does not come past me without full, some reservation and some concern and in great concern, because I care about our community and I care about our students, I care about our teachers. But I also am looking at all these things that, you know, make me think that coming back on December 1st and looking where we are to make the decision, whether it be December 6th, meaning allowing a week after Thanksgiving to see what our numbers are after people have traveled far and wide and congregated potentially without masks in their homes for Thanksgiving with people from different states, traveling on planes. I have those concerns, but why not look to see where we are at that point? I recognize the emails and I want to thank parents, many, many parents who wrote to us and two people who came this evening to talk about this, that being vaccinated alone is not fully protective. I do recognize that. I also recognize that we've done a lot of work on our ventilation system, that we do still have hand washing protocols, and maybe we need to make sure that those are all being utilized. We also have some distancing when possible, and yet we also know that at lunchtime and possibly at break, kids are congregating in less than three feet and, but certainly at lunch, they are unmasked. And yet, the numbers have been extremely low. When I look at the numbers from Gibbons, I think to myself, why not flexible mask? They're so low. Did I read it correctly that there have been two students all year that of positive cases? And so it makes me also think, do you separate the decision between Gibbons and the high school? There was a very different perception from teachers from those two different buildings. At least that's my feedback that I've received. And then I appreciate that even discussing, Dr. Mayer talking about close contacts of vaccinated, should they be masked afterwards? And I believe that changing the protocol for close contacts was a good choice to accommodate that change. But I do have major concerns about our social emotional well being for our students. And I'm thinking that when I think about the balance and weight between the two, I come back that the mental health of our students, and I recognize that people are scared, but they were also scared on August 17th, 2020, probably the most difficult school committee meeting we ever had. That was the decision on how we come back into the school buildings last year. People were scared then, too. And I get that change is scary and that we're dealing with COVID-19. It has its range of emotion, and I guess I'm feeling that I would rather wait till for December 1st to be able to rediscuss where our numbers at in order to feel comfortable or not flex masking on whether it's December 6th or January 10th. But I would rather us remain open. So that's my thought. Those are my thoughts about it.
Steve, do you mind if I let Sarah have a chance to speak?
I just wanted to add one thing to to what I read. I originally drafted it to to around the concept of the holidays and that, in fact, the incubation period for COVID is based on the CDC is between two and 14 days. So if you said 14 days after Thanksgiving, it would have brought us to December 10th. And my original draft was based on December 10th and then remasking after Christmas until January 10th. So since this is a significant story, those few days in between, between the 10th of December and and the winter vacation, I could move in the conservative direction, which is why I changed what I read to January 10th. Certainly earlier is okay, but the idea that that this becomes a bouncing ball where you're on and you're off and you're on and you're off, I think is as difficult as many other things we do here. And it's certainly more conservative to stick it out for a little longer with a policy that basically says if it goes awry, we do something quickly. So that's the background behind what what I put together to speak about. I'm certainly interested in what makes logical sense to protect the most people from either the issue of COVID or from the ravages of having to wear a mask every day. I think the history of this town and the students that are in it and the faculty that we have proves that we will somehow or another survive this, no matter which date we choose. But I do think we have to be conservative in the sense of what could happen as a result of the earlier date when we're going to go right back into another holiday season. So those are my thoughts.
Hi, so another quick question for Amber. Hopefully it's quick. Is January 10th consistent with what you're hearing from other superintendents in other districts, like that North Borough, South Borough, or whoever you kind of collaborate with?
I've mostly been interacting with Carolyn Hopkington. I mean, we're the second district to move, so I don't, I don't think there are a lot of others that have, that are in the queue. I know North Borough and South Borough, I think they had indicated they weren't even going to consider it until the January 15th date after the DESI came out with their pause with the window of young people getting vaccinated. So if there's been kind of radio silence on anyone else moving, and I think around us, it would be North Borough, South Borough, Hopkington, and us have all received the offboarding opportunity. So I think other districts are preparing, and they'll probably draw from our protocols. And so consistency and and good implementation helps us lead, which, you know, we usually like to be in the middle. I'm usually much more fond of being in the middle. But I think that in this case, we'll be one of the early adopters.
Okay, thanks. So I have expressed before that I do feel that flexible masking is the next logical step in the evolution of our new normal of living with COVID. I'm frustrated at the delayed implementation with the situation, not at anyone individually or anything like that. I guess it's my expectations over the summer. I had the expectation that we'd start the school year with flexible masking, and now it's November and we're still talking about it. So a very high percentage of our middle and high schoolers, students and staff, went out and were vaccinated for themselves, for their families, and for the good of our community. And then the Department of Ed stepped in in August, and, you know, had that not happened, they would be currently afforded the same choice that we have right now to attend our meetings with or without a mask. So I guess that's just frustrating for me. So I see the move to flexible masking for our students as an extension of the way they're living outside of school, they're socializing, shopping, playing sports, dancing, performing, going to restaurants, all with flexible masking. And some of those venues and activities require masks and some do not. They know how to flexible mask, and they're also aware of their friends and their peers. And they know that some people will continue to mask for their own personal reasons. And I feel that that will be respected, because that's sometimes the point that's brought up in some of the communications that we get. Also, the mental health and learning benefits that, you know, others have pointed out this evening are so important and becoming more important as the year progresses, I feel like. But of course, per the latest input from the Board of Health, which I watched all their meetings a couple of times, too, Lisa, you're not alone. The meeting last night was very short, so I thanked them, or the other night, sorry. So I guess I'm okay again with further waiting, delaying delaying a vote at least, and looking at our policy, like Kristen said. And thank you again to everyone that emailed. Well, I guess I know that, sorry, waiting will be too slow for some and too fast for others. And so that was a range of input that we got from our emails, and thank you to everyone that emailed. Everyone really takes time, does research, puts a lot of data in. It's it's helpful. I appreciate it. And thank you for taking the time to do that and to show up here tonight. Thank you. And it is very good news that the five to 11 year olds have had a couple clinics already, and it seems like people are coming out for them. And, you know, I know kids in school are telling their teachers that they're getting vaccinated, so if waiting a little bit affords them the chance to get the vaccinations, that makes, it's logical, makes sense. But I mean, I would like to take a vote at the next meeting, kind of like what Amber said, have a date. I totally agree with everything Lisa just said. How can you pick a date in January? When we get to January, everyone could be in a different situation, and who knows? But at least if we have a date, I would set expectations and kind of get everyone to wrap their head around it, maybe meet in the middle again. So those are my thoughts.
One other comment, I guess, is as we see what's going on out there in the rest of the country, Massachusetts will probably be be the last to agree and follow CDC, but that everyone above a certain age is more than likely allowed to get their booster shot. And I think that will, in my mind, you know, seals what my logic would be, particularly since, you know, the date of the data that I had provided to the committee was the 11th of, I think it was the 11th. The 9th, the 9th of November. So what we see in that data is even the the five to 11 year olds, almost 100 kids had been vaccinated by that time of that age group, and by now it's probably three times that. So the percentage of even the five to 12 kids getting the vaccine by the time, let's say, excuse me, January 10th happens, that that age group is more than likely to be highly vaccinated, which is obviously the risk in this town. Right now, the majority of us are protected to the extent that anything can protect us. But the kids five through 12 were the ones that are still out there, who could be affected by by people who could carry the stuff. So bottom line is, I think it's, I certainly urge every parent in town to get their kids vaccinated. For over 150 years, schools have required on the day that kids start school to be vaccinated for whatever the the world knew was a problem, not only for the kids, but also because it was good for the country. I don't think this condition is any any different than that, and as a result, all of us sitting at this table were vaccinated before we started school. And this case is, I think, another one that justifies that same decision. So I certainly urge every parent and everybody to get vaccinated because it lowers your risk. It may not be a positive forever protection, but at least it's better than just being out there and catching the disease.
So we, I appreciate the range of thoughtful conversation, the questions, and looking at the review, and the patience to step it through. I think you have captured in all of your comments a range of the decision making process that looks to data compromise, the vacations, trying to get stability in a plan. These are all pieces of the work that have shep- These are all pieces of the work that have shepherded us as leaders through all of this work over quite a long time period. And I want to acknowledge all the people that aren't at the table here with us who have participated in good faith and relationship to come to the table, work on those decisions with us, and build a way forward during very stressful times. So thank you. I think that we should be in good shape to meet on December 1st, and you'll have received, you know, a range of feedback. But I do want to end by saying, I would echo Sarah's comments, that setting a date allows, a part of leadership is stability, planning, and a way forward. And it's never perfect, but we've set a date, we focus. Certainly, DESI could derail us, or our data could derail us. I don't think either will happen, and I believe setting that date lets people settle, enjoy their holiday, move forward. We have time to put our mitigations in place, and we step forward in an organized way. I think we certainly will continue conversation. I'll get more feedback after these comments, you know, I'm sure, and we will come together on the 1st.
I just want to add one thing, that if this data was presented to us in October and we were asked to vote for it, I would have voted for it. So it's not the question of going flexible or option masking, since we are so close to the holidays. I think it makes sense to just wait a little bit longer and go December 10th.
Would you feel the same if there were no cases the week after December 1st? If we met December 1st and there were no cases, would it change your perception about trying it out for two weeks? And I ask that only because we don't know. Maybe there'll be 20 cases. I mean, we don't know. So that not knowing is, I guess that's where I'm coming from, the unknown, like much of this last 20 months. Getting comfortable.
And so, looking at the policy, it's EBCFA, face coverings. I think we would only have to, if we, you know, vote to amend this policy to allow flexible masking, it would, under the part that says additionally, face masks or face coverings will not be required, and right now it says during mask breaks while eating or drinking, during outdoor physical education classes, or while outside. We could add a bullet point there that could also say, for students and staff at Westboro High School and Gibbons Middle School, who have documented that they are fully vaccinated with an approved COVID-19 vaccination. And then I would want to also add some language around, something about staff and students will wear a mask all day for a period of time when administration determines there's a need to do so. So again, it makes it that flexible piece in there for us to move in and out of masking as needed quickly without having to always come back to the table to amend the policy every single time.
Well, I would just add a paragraph that dealt with the fact that the school committee votes to accept the program as defined by the administration, or something like that. You know, so that, in fact, it allows us the full flexibility to change that administrative program, you know, within the jurisdiction of the school committee and not worry about all that detail in this particular policy.
Yeah, sure.
Either way, either way.
Because I made like a lot of crossouts and stuff, so I don't know what I was thinking.
There's one more.
That's totally fine.
The other part of the amendment is, for me, giving the superintendent discretion to change the policy until we meet again, or... I was like, oh, I love that. Go ahead. I mean, I'm saying that because what if in midstream, you know, we don't have a meeting immediately?
Why don't we all submit versions to Kristen? She can figure it out.
Submit versions. If you have, you know, language you want included, submit it to me, and I can mock up a draft for us for next meeting.
One of the ways you handle that issue is that, you know, with notice to the school committee, that you allow the discretion of the superintendent with notice to the school committee. So, you know, good management practice to allow the people who are in the trenches to be able to do something about a problem, as long as they provide information to the decision-making group, which in this case would be the school committee.
It's not a trench, it's a moat at this point. It's getting deeper and deeper.
You everyone.
You can't see, but I'm smiling under this mask. I'm like, it's really not a trench at this point, it's more like a moat.
So if anyone looked at our agenda and thought, oh, that's easy, there's only a couple things on the agenda. Not so easy when you're in the middle of budget season. So moving to our next agenda item is budget presentation number three. And this is also a huge part of what we do in the fall and the winter here in Westboro Public Schools and on the school committee, is pull together a budget that we can bring to town meeting in March. And so we're at presentation number three, developing a preliminary budget.
Great, thank you. So change of gears. I want to thank David and Daniel and Sherri Stevens for helping to just continue to look at and Paige, thank you Paige Thomas, the whole team. It takes everybody looking back at, two years back, looking at profiles, pulling data forward. You know, it's a complex process to build a budget that's barely implemented. And I think whenever we're doing this, the continual change and active fluid nature of what school budgeting is in terms of impacts to all of the contracts, the enrollments, the complexity of special education, it makes it a dynamic and interesting process that, for David, makes it an area that he gets to feel is both exciting and challenging. So our goal tonight in looking at, and again, it's also our first cycle through the budget together, and so I want to say it's been really enjoyable, as enjoyable as budgeting can be together, but to have time to forge our working relationship to figure out how to utilize documents that, you know, aren't Dave's documents as he moves from the first time, taking us more time to be thoughtful and to really start to forge our own design for how we want to manage. I find us, when we're talking, to say, well, next year we'll do it this way, well, next year we'll do it this way. And I think that, and realizing the kind of trending data that we want to see and stuff that we're excited about, where we could like, oh, we could pull that and look at it, and it would give us a better idea of this or that around grants. So I think it's very exciting to see, again, the leadership that David brings to the district, and I look forward to, you know, March town meeting when we'll defend it on town meeting floor. You're one budget presentation away from your final kind of recommendations from me. So I know you all just want to cut to the percent, you always just give me the number, but there's such a long process, and so staging it also allows everyone to digest the complexity of it over time. So our next budget to you on December 1st will be my recommendations, and we should be then, you get two weeks after that, or actually three weeks, a little bit longer because of the holidays, to really look at it and push questions back and forth. So as we move forward here, tonight what we're going to do is we'll do a quick review of the timeline and goals. We'll look at the 23 cost centers, and Dave kind of set them up a little differently this year, so it streamlines the presentation, which I actually like. Tiers one, two, and three, we'll talk in them, mostly in depth around one. We'll outline known budget impacts, and we'll look at some preliminary numbers that really anchor the only other numbers that will add up to what brings us to our final recommendations. Because the only missing piece beyond this is really all of the salary and compensation that drives the rest of the district on the human side. We're right at the November 17th. I just want to call out, we need to schedule, and, you know, Lisa, you've always said it on that with us, looking at, and Kristen has as well, at different times, meeting with the finance committee liaison team, and so I'm hopeful, I'll have Andrea reach out to them tomorrow. I know Mike asked me, Michael Brady, the chair, asked me if they had reached out, and it might be that they've emailed, but typically Andrea would pull that up. So we'll activate getting in contact with Hank Roush and Beth Bloomberg, and set up a time to go through these presentations and start working with them. And then you'll see, we'll advertise the public hearing, we'll come back on the 1st where you get the final recommendations. And you see there's a nice stretch there until then, you know, there's time for other reflection. I continue to look at making sure that we focus on sustaining and maintaining the excellence that defines Westboro and brings people here to raise their children in this community, and then to stay and enjoy the benefits of a really wonderful town. Respect in all of those relationships and the balance of them, costs, strategic planning, recovery, recovery being a big part that I keep pushing us through because the impacts of the last two budget cycles really have to be articulated as a recovery because it's very much impacting both our capacity to budget and the impact on our numbers. I want to do a quick review of the impacts of '22 yet again. That is a honors level history class with Frank O'Brien. Unrestored COVID cuts from '22. So in this current budget, I think there's some interesting things I want to point out to you about these cuts. When I came to you with the superintendent's recommendation for FY '22, last year the budget was at 5.6. And you asked to go back and look at it. There's a lot of uncertainty with where we were with the town and with COVID and with budgeting, and just not quite sure where the March numbers would come in at the town level. And so I would say those are $400,000 of somewhat strategic slash arbitrary delineations of basically removing $400,000 from the budget to get it under five. But that's real financial loss to the base of the operation and management of the district to a $400,000 impact that you see and feel in this year's, you know, percentage numbers as well. We were very strategic about it and looked at those, but those we articulated at the time were real losses to kind of programming work. And again, we used two strategic one-time offsets that just pulled the number down, but that's like using free cash to run operational costs. It just sets you back at a deficit and a higher percentage the following year. So you see that in the $150,000 cut there and in the 126. It served our purpose, and we felt good about that number, and it brought us into town meeting in strong collaboration with the town, and it led to an approved budget with no questions on town meeting floor, which was really a first and something that we really celebrated as recognizing to the relationship we share in the financial responsibilities of the town. When you look at the unrestored COVID cuts to FY '21, you push back to another $706,000 that we cut out of that budget that were COVID cuts where we took a lot of money out. That's the year before. And we also mitigated against the bus that year because of the huge impact of the busing. So we cut the FY '21 budget twice. So I just, I think that it's important that we be able to acknowledge, defend, and articulate the level of cutting that we did on the last two years of budgeting. You'll see some areas where pieces of this, I'll call them out, and they're in some of the tiered requests for return. You know, some of this has been restored. The union position had been a deferred hiring, so we did then hire that one. So there are a couple that, as of at the end of '21, these were unrestored. We brought back in $50,000 on the $150,000 cut in technology. So, you know, you've heard that articulated in the FY '22 budget. And then last year, just a snapshot for you, you see this number, because these are the numbers that you see leveraged across the comparisons now to FY '23. You're going to see the number for transportation there, that $3,083. You see some of these numbers roll right forward as, you know, the comparisons against the budget increases in this upcoming year. So that was the $57 million budget we brought forward to the 9.4% or 4.9%. And you could see how streamlined that was. It was basically salaries. So now let's move forward into looking at '23 and what you know about set numbers that will impact the base before we look at the compensation, which will bring us to the final So again, just reiterating, for the last three budget cycles back into '19 and '20, we basically either minimally increased, received zero increase, or decreased department and school-based budgets. We really basically tightened down those to shave out percentages on different budgets, to cut down on expenditures, and to try to, you know, limit allocations at the operations and management side. I don't disagree with that as a plan, but it has a cumulative impact. You will see in FY '23 some very specific but targeted limited increases to athletics, technology, and curriculum writing. Those are all rate increases and contract increases and then other pieces. And I'm just calling out there that we also trying to recover from increasing the pay to subs, it's kind of a contracted increase more than that, and we had already cut that number a couple of times, so there's a strategic recovery for some of that funding. So this is how Dave framed the operational school-based budgets for you this year. Typically, in the past, you've seen the large spreadsheets which show you all the numbers. You can't really read them on the screen anyway, but they will show up in your budget book in all the detail. But basically, there's zero increase, they just move their allocations around as their choice to make sure that they're, you know, properly utilizing the funding they have at the school-based level. So you can see there for Armstrong fails, Hastings, WAC, Mill Pond, Gibbons, and the high school, all 0% increases coming into '23. Moving to departmental budgets, fine arts, facilities, curriculum and staff development, administration district-wide, student services and athletics, you see there the strategic increase of the $4,649. I'll talk more about it further in. It's basically a modest increase against the change in contracting, cost of ref, cost of maintenance of all of our facilities, cost of busing, cost of just programming, having really not been increased in ways, and again, you can see we had actually cut athletics budgets a couple of times. So Johanna really represented the fact that not, it's kind of similarly, not visualizing the real impact at her budget level, it needed to be increased. And then Dave thought it's always good to reflect for you the operational budget costs of just your work for the town, and again, to be transparent within the community level, too, that you're also zero increased in maintaining the work that we do for legal fees is really where you'll see the swing there when we're in negotiations, and that is really the large swinging number that changes. So, you know, not, I think, right now it's maintained at a level at which we should be able to manage negotiations into the next year.
You have a zero salary line there.
Yes, I know. So there's a summary of that. There's the cost centers for those areas, and then you see the technology, which I'm going to talk a little bit about, targeted increase for the technology. You see the athletics we just spoke about, and then the transportation increase. And there's a couple other slides on that, and you can see that basically across contracts and services then, $207,000 as kind of minimal base rollovers. Do you want to talk about the busing a little bit, or do you want to wait till I go to the other slide?
Yeah, the slides probably just helps articulate it. I may have to go back and forth a little bit.
All right, we'll go back and forth. You'll see there's two numbers, Lisa had been asking, there's two numbers in the busing number. This is the all-in number with vans and everything.
It's in and out of districts, so this number is going to be about $360,000 more than the number that you see on the slide when I talk about the actual, basically what I refer to AMPM service, which includes all of our vans, yellow buses, and kind of small buses. And then this number right here represents out of district, so anything that we do for special ed, some van pool, sometimes we have to appropriate a van pool that doesn't have service to kind of an offset company. We've talked about some of the cases before. So it's a three, I did the CPI index to the larger number because we don't know van pool rates yet. I'm just using van pool as a kind of generalization of it. My biggest concern with that number is COVID-related is similar to what special education services is, that the ability for them to kind of make their own rates. So we're kind of watching that mindfully related to what the individual special education vans are going to start charging us for rates next year because there's such a demand on them, because of the struggles and challenges that some of the yellow bus companies are having. So we're being mindful of that, but again, I put the entire 4.3% on the total cost of in and out of district transportation.
And I think when we look at that, I think that's sound. We can't afford to end up short in that area, and I think the contract for van pool, I mean, I'm chairing the Aspen Valley Collaborative this year, they're currently looking, we're waiting for that contract to come in there in negotiations, certainly won't be a small number. Certainly won't be a small number. So again, keeping you up to date on all of the ways that we've framed these costs thus far. Now let's do a little individual kind of detail. The technology, which we've really articulated, remains the backbone of Westboro Public Schools, both in our own infrastructure to run the district and for students to experience the experience they need to have. You have two areas where the 63,000 is targeted to sustain programming and to sustain infrastructure. There are other additional costs not called out here that also impact those two sides, but these are the big ones. When we went to one-to-one, when we were in COVID at the close of last, of 1920 into 2021, we did not have a K to three. It was our last grade level that was not one-to-one. It was classroom-based. So there was one classroom set of iPads. Things were shared. They rotated the pods through the grade level. So there was like a pod of iPads and they moved to the first grade area. So when we needed to escalate that purchasing, we made good headway. We shifted some other allocation of purchasing across the way that he rotates replacement of Macs and other books and the Chromebooks to shift purchasing so that he could develop the purchases to move to one-to-one, K to three, which we did. He used some ESER funding for some of that, but the majority of that really then becomes in sustaining the rollover of bringing in new K-classes, the rotation of those grades and stabilizing the K3 one-to-one. I think we're in a good place for it, but it'll take him time to get those contracts and those rollovers in place. Typically over the years, John has seen a leveraged buyback that helps us with sustained rollover. He also tends to get an extra year out of iPad service. Like he's very strategic in what he manages, but this is, you know, again, the last time, each time we layered these in over the years, you saw an initial blip. So in terms of programming, this is the one that impacts some of this number. The other is he's starting a very focused, robust replacement of the projectors with the new smart board technology that will parallel what's at fails. It's pretty spectacular upgrade to the smart board technology that is currently in all of our classrooms. So John came on board when I did, so now here we are eight years in. And when he innovated, a lot of the boards that we had in classrooms were already pretty dated. He's rotated the majority of them, but we're coming into a cycle where the next layer of innovation for technologies is happening. And to stay current in Westboro, we need to have our faculty experience those upgrades. He'll have a five-year plan for that rotation. When he originally designed his technology one-to-one, we took it from five years and crushed it to three. So he basically implemented a five-year model in three to bring Westboro to a one-to-one. And similarly here, we'll see if he can manage a trajectory to tighten the rotation to get those in the hands of faculty and students. We get a big boost in the sense that one whole building's already rolled over. So John is cascading some of the older ones that are more current than some of the other ones through the other buildings, pulling them from the old fails, moving them around, and then making a layered purchase of the new smart boards. That would be technology that we would do, you know, be fun to do a school visit at some point when you see fails and have him show you the advantages of those boards and how they're working. They actually are web-based. They work really seamlessly. It's like having a big iPad. It's just a much more interactive and less cumbersome model. And already it was interesting, day one, teachers were getting them queued up in the building to listen to their music, to pull up their stuff and to do things on their boards. And on day one, they were all on and activated with messaging and things for kids to do on their first day, which I was really impressed with. It demonstrates the, that their, the ease of use is really impressive. So those are the two pieces that are around programming. And the other piece there looks to the copier contract, which we've called out. But you know, he is absorbing increases, as we've talked about in supply chain, hardware prices and subscription services definitely being impacted and increased. So calculated down to a tight dollar, he always gives me an exact dollar amount at $63,480 is really what he's looking for in the rollover of his planning.
I was just going to say, so this is the slide I referenced here. This is essentially the actual cost of the NRT contract is the $2.7 million contract. You know, in pulling apart the actual transportation cost for the district, that's where you get the 3 million. You know, I wanted to provide a perspective as to what the contract at the CPI would be versus the overall cost. But at the same time, you know, Amber said that, you know, historically it makes sense to kind of show the cost of an additional bus and what it might impact. As I mentioned at the last meeting, plus based on some of the conversations we've had with NRT, actual buses aren't the issue. It's more about human capital. So taking a small appropriation from that potential 6,2000, if we needed to, to essentially invest in our own kind of backup or sub-driver program within the district would behoove us a lot more than it would to have paid training and then somewhat maybe offer a quick stipend to someone to say, hey, if you're willing to do this when there's a need and you have the capabilities of doing so schedule-wise that we may have to call you into service, that would probably benefit us a lot more than actually have another bus. So kind of just the innovative kind of really assessing of where the greatest need are as opposed to just kind of having the cost on a yellow bus would be, would better suit, would, you know, be beneficial to us.
I think to complement that, the other pieces as we look at, you know, making sure that as we see a stabilization in our enrollment, we shouldn't, we were adding bus, 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 you know, and I think we've, across the span of the growth in that enrollment, added several over the last couple of years. If we saw a growth in ridership, which is very interesting because our ridership is higher right now, that could drive. I mean, you never have a four, if 4,000 students decided to ride the buses, we'd need a lot more. I mean, you really, you transport a percentage of that public percentage, both within the one-mile radius, but also within just those who choose to ride or be dropped off or drive, right? So if we saw an increase in ridership, that might shift our busing, but hopefully we'll see a stability where we're, like you said, we won't need that bus. We can invest in other types of more advantageous improvement of service. But for now, we're not carrying that cost in any of the budgeting. We're just calling it out to you so you can see what it is.
There may be a need to analyze the data again.
Yep.
When we went to the conference last, was it last week? There was a nonprofit organization that does assessments on bus transportation at not a very big cost. And what was interesting about it was they recognized the ridership is up, but it would be nice to know if we have the right number of buses in the right configuration.
Yep.
Whereas we did that assessment, thought we were overbussed. We had one extra, but told not to do anything about that because we were changing the time of Mill Pond and the middle school and high school. And then COVID hit.
Yep.
So now are our numbers really accurate anymore? I'm going to say they don't seem like that assessment three years ago was really very useful right now.
Yeah, full buses versus kind of half-empty buses, you know. So an assessment could be done or should be done, you know, again, post-COVID. I think obviously which, one of the driving factors of the budget, you know, going forward, not only for 23, but going forward would be, you know, staffing needs versus the students' needs. So, you know, we have to kind of wait till all that, not only from a curriculum instruction standpoint, but kind of a ridership standpoint, parent feeling safe, should their kids go on the bus, should they not? So there's a whole bunch of stuff to get vetted out and I think, but again, I do think it would behoove the district to have a, an assessment done as to buses, ridership and kind of routing, and then kind of present us with the total number.
And I also just read that the COVID dollars can be used for transportation. And the reason is because COVID impact to the shortage on drivers may be causing greater costs for transportation. I mean, not that you don't have the COVID dollars earmarked for many things right now, but there was just another possibility.
Yeah, no, that's good to hear.
What does it take to get the study that was suggested?
It's usually an outside consultant firm that would come in and do an assessment of the district, but they also look at enrollment trends.
Yeah.
And then we'd have to do a kind of a, you know, a bidding process or get an RFPs from everybody to see who potentially could do it for, you know, what's appropriate for our district versus that kind of urban district, so to speak.
Yeah, we have a couple of studies that, I mean, one of the things we'll look at is kind of piece of strategic planning, if we could finish the budget and get unmasked and get the strategic plan completed all by, you know, holiday break. The, we had the enrollment study. We had the buildings and grounds study that gave us the comprehensive look. And we did have a pass busing study. And those kinds of things ground good planning. So we'll need to, we'll bring it forward and have a discussion thoughtfully around which ones we need to do again. I mean, I think the, I think the maintenance study needs to be redone and, you know, we'll see. We need to have a good thoughtful discussion about it and look at the cost impact versus the benefits and see what we need to do.
And the data is already there from NRT.
Yes.
So it's a matter of the consultant to analyze it, right?
Right.
Yeah, I think that's what they would do is this kind of, essentially.
Yep.
Can I interject for a question though? For, we're sort of in, part of the reason I would surmise that the ridership is up is because people are still working at home and rather than driving to work, right? So, so, and we want to wait a little while for it to settle down, see what companies do in terms of bringing in the workforces back. Because if you look at the data prematurely, you're going to get an artificial.
Yeah, it'll be interesting. Yeah, I think there's pieces there. I mean, again, it's not the most urgent driving cost-saving piece for us to pick up right now, but it is a piece of thoughtful planning that we should be holding on to, you know, in terms of our work.
I think the thing though is to protect the data that is, let's say, month by month by month data.
Yeah.
And let's say that we create an RFP and we hire the guy in May to analyze the year's data.
Yep.
Right, yeah.
That might be the time so that we'll, we'll know what we need to do for the fall.
Right. And their big thing is also consolidation of routes, which is never popular, but, and you have to make decisions, if, you have to make decisions and I would have to make recommendations around, you know, do we want kids to ride the bus 20 minutes longer because it's more full and it's a longer bus ride, but it has some cost savings and the, you know, the other benefits of that we have to weigh out was have the rotary and we have the potential of in a year, potentially shifting some streets if we need to. So they're all pieces that are, you know, pretty interesting and complex, make running a district really fun. So that's actually puzzle work that's kind of exciting. So we could, we can do that.
Be nice to get to the exciting stuff.
It'd be nice to get to the exciting stuff, definitely.
That's the goal.
So then around athletics, we really looked at referee, referee services, security details, busing costs, but also just supplies, maintenance, programming, management of the fields. Like, you know, it's an expensive business running all those kids through all that stuff and keeping all those refs and the schedules and, you know, Johanna does an amazing job to keep it all running, but I want to make sure that we acknowledge that there's sometimes true costs. Now, you know, we also supplement aspects of her delineated budget by pulling from like tickets and student service, the athletic fees. And so there's, there's a supplemental framework to her budget. The true cost of running her complete programming is more a composite of multiple sources. But I think that she needs to budget knowing sometimes what her base budget is for costs and services. And she's kind of got that accountant's mind where she feels like the true cost of what is delineating to run her programming should be carried appropriately in her budget. So this is a modest increase, but it is again, exact around what she feels kind of moves her forward.
And we didn't have a lot of those. I mean, we cut the athletic fees in half last year. We didn't have ticket sales, so we're, we're back to having that again, which feels good.
Well, and you're seeing an increase in service costs. I mean, you're seeing this across the board. People are going to, they're paying for services at a higher level. They're, they're going to pay snowplow drivers more and bus drivers more and referees more and security details more because people are not wanting to pick up that time.
Yep.
So the financial incentives for that layer of support, live work is becoming more expensive and appropriate that we should pay it if we want it. And I think it's, you know, going to be a change in some of the industry standards potentially. So something we have to look at as we move forward. We're very fortunate, we continue to be able to advantageously staff here in Westboro, but you see places struggling to get their cafeteria staff and their custodial teams and things like that. So, so I just want to move into the next phase, which is in looking at, so there's the base costs. Those are minimal rollovers. You're basically looking at that 200,000, which are basically contract changes and the minimal pieces I just delineated to you with all the building budgets being zero serviced, level service. Now we're looking at the process for requests. I'm just, I want to articulate this by being clear. The tier one requests are the ones we will review. And they will only be reviewed at this point in my mind if we can find alternative or budget neutral options to bring them in without impact to the overall budget recommendation. That's kind of where I am right now in looking at them. That said, I believe that there are some advantageous opportunities as we look at the tier one options and we'll talk a little bit about those. So in the tiered request model, you've got general requests that we will discuss briefly. You've got a point one increase, which is basically the, I think it's 1.5 she has, what does she have right now FTE was?
I want to say 1.7.
Okay. I think she's looking to shift an additional point one to one of her existing reading teachers to cover more classwork around recovery work.
Part of it has to do with actually that the fails population has grown over the years. It used to be 300, you know, with that, this was budgeted for like 300 at one point. It was two, well, let's see, was it two? No, she's a point seven. So 1.7 reading teachers at fails when Hastings has three, Armstrong has two. And the population of fails has grown, so getting them, like they're in the high threes now. And so Christina Cooney, the new literacy coordinator and Mary Ann O'Connor, I mean, Mary Ann Standard, don't know where that came from, both talked about this and that's their recommendation is to add a point one.
Athletics, Johanna really wants us to look towards a point five athletic trainer to support the active trainer in place. There's a vast array of things going on when all the sports are playing. You often have multiple games on multiple sites, some away, some over at Gibbons. You have service care being provided in the health training center, you know, somebody that's needing things done. You've got then the field supervision. So, you know, from a safety standpoint, she feels like Eric can't be in enough places to do the coverage of the games to make sure that we have someone on the field who can provide trainer services to both the visiting team and to our team. I think there's some, you know, range of discussion I'm having with regard to ways that we could attain that and take a look at that, but that, that is what that request is. It's a pretty straight-up request.
Just a quick additive on that, there's, there are contractual services that Johanna is looking at related to that, whereas from an FTE perspective, it's not an all-in cost. It would just be a contract with a local clinician group that can do that and come in. We would make a contract with them for spring and, you know, winter sports or winter and fall sports or whatnot and say, here's $15,000 and you serve us every day for these two seasons. And then, you know, that's the end of the contract. So there's no long-term liabilities and, you know, kind of human capital concerns related to trying to find someone that has the ability to be a point five athletic trainer. So we're investigating that too as well.
Yep. So that's an example of being able to bring a cost in at, you know, a reasonable expectation where we gain the service without, you know, an impact that, that we feel is beyond reasonable in this kind of budgeting. You have a request for the social studies coordinator and I would just have Daniel provide a brief overview for you of that position as it currently exists.
Sure. You probably recall a couple of years ago, we did a review of the social studies curriculum. At that point, we put, we used the innovation position that we've had for different sort of temporary roles. We put it into the social studies position at case, pre-case six. The purpose was to help guide and create a new social studies curriculum. And we also, of the different, all the curriculum, core curriculum areas, we don't have a social studies position. And so the person who's currently in the position has done an exceptional job, but it also like begs the question, and I know the committee was, you know, pretty enthusiastic about the report we put forward a couple of years ago and that the importance of social studies, you know, that it's, there's no reason to devalue it relative to science or math or ELA at the elementary level, keeping in mind, you know, there's approximately 100 elementary teachers teaching social studies. They're all generalists. The reason we have, I think, the strong curriculum that we have The, the reason we have, I think, the strong curriculum that we have is to have coordinators overseeing and doing in-house professional development and coaching in buildings, doing model lessons. And so we're putting forward this as being a permanent position.
So currently, there's some, you know, I mean, opportunity there for us to review. You realize that was funded through the innovation position work that we've used over the next last several years. And so, you know, strategically, we want to look at how that funding source could be leveraged thoughtfully such that we might be able to bring this forward with, with very little cost impact. So it would be, if it moves forward within the larger number that I want to present to you, I would make a clear proposal for why it would be coming in, it would be part of my overall recommendation. And I think it's a matter of crunching the numbers on it and looking at it within the fold of other decisions. You know, I think I would agree with Daniel, it's very advantageous for us to sustain the position, that a lot of the curriculum that needs to be extracted and innovated. And, you know, teachers do a lot of incredible work, but as generalists, they might well maintain aspects of curriculum that need to be updated. We might have updated units and they become a mash of old and new. And I think when you get a really good curriculum coordinator, they help streamline that transition for faculty and, and coach the innovation of the transition to that new curriculum and support it. So this is the type of work that, that maintains high performance and strong curriculum experiences for young learners.
Can I just ask, is that for K through 12? You described elementary schools, but did you mean that this would be for K through 12 covering?
It's K to six.
I'm sorry, K to six?
Pre-K six, yeah.
And that's what the coordinator would be?
Yep.
Yeah.
And they interface with the department heads that then cover seven to 12. So you'll see, they, they come together in different frameworks of leadership work with Daniel and with the principals and with the different curriculum leaders. So for example, when they move forward with aspects of the English self-study this year, the English coordinators and different people at the elementary level will partner with the department heads around aspects of reflection.
If I may?
Yep.
The, the department heads act as coordinators.
Right, at the, exactly, the curriculum experts, exactly. Then you see a request for the student services coordinator addition back at Armstrong. We moved, actually, that was one of the COVID cuts that we did, we actually streamlined. And then Sherri had been working, Sherri Stevens had been working over the last several years to have the student services coordinators overlap across schools, picking up a stranded service delivery that covered a school in a quarter or a school in a day. There's things about that that we like and don't like, she's proposing that we put it back in, and it's up there for discussion. There's pros and cons to that. I think there's real strengths in the student services coordinators working across buildings, and I think Sherri and I need more conversation about it before I see it as a recommendation that would be sustained in this budget. World languages is an interesting, it's a .4. It's a request working with the department head Bobby and Brian, talking about wanting to provide a co-taught entry support level for world language, usually Spanish, coming in for you pickup, eighth graders who haven't had language, who want to make transition, who might need extra support to, to make that transition. And ninth and 10th grade students who haven't yet picked up a language, who want to come in and pick that up and would benefit from a co-taught classroom. There's a lot of strength of language support and instructional support to do so. He and I are currently talking about it, I'll give you kind of pros and cons on all of these if they come forward or not. I, I feel like they're in tier one because they are all innovation outside of the sped coordinator, which is management. These are all things that improve on the ground service delivery and work with our teachers and with students, so they're, they're being looked at. But they're all going to have to be valued against the strain of our, our overall budget constraints and challenges. I feel like that's the appropriate list. You can hear that there's discussions to be had on each of them, and it might be that they're called out in a tier one, but by next year, they're moving into fruition. I, I know there's currently discussion, for example, at the high school where world language might become a graduation requirement. So in looking towards making a proposal where world language would become a graduation requirement, which I think is, is a, a strength that we might well support and bring forward to you, providing that tiered change within that same year, in my mind, might be a stronger recommendation for coming into the budget then, as an example. So by calling it out now and discussing it with you, I want it to be framed in our record, and it might well be that it waits one more year, or it might come into this year based upon other, other things we can do. Okay, so that's the analysis of tier one. I think anything that our faculty bring forward are strong worthy pieces. The tier two and tier three we hold for now, and, and I think, I think David did a whole set of meetings with people and feels like they sifted out the ones that they felt they wanted us to give a deeper look to. All right? These are the backups for you. I just took the original slides from one and two and just show you where they tiered out in the levels of colors, one, two, and three. Now, some of the costs will move around, those were estimates, but.
I have a quick question. That Mill Pond Clinician, we did talk about that the last time, and I, I don't know, I seem to like it. So I was wondering why it ended up in tier two then?
Which one?
Was the Mill Pond Clinician? I think I'd asked the question and then.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think, as I said, all of them, there's many of them in tier two that have benefits. I mean, I think that in working with the principals and the admin at the building level, they could articulate through discussion that it could go to a tier two and they could wait on it if needed or try to achieve some of the goals in other ways. So that's kind of the challenge of how we work on that with them, is trying to push them around. I also feel like there's many strengths already in place at Mill Pond where the innovation of the tiered intervention work that the counselors are doing is really picking up steam, and I'd like it to have another year of implementation before I look at adding another counselor. So I think there's a little more work to be done on the proposal, that's just my assessment. I mean, you know, so there's some of that discussion that's a piece of the work. I think our counseling and our SEL work and our intervention and our tiered work, like it's very robust and picking up some real roots in our district that you can see the impact of. And that gives people energy for innovating more and more, but I'm slowing that down a little bit as we look at some of our wider challenges. Always you can argue to add it in and, you know, we can have that discussion. You can do that after you see the percent. What's known and what's next? So those are all the pieces on the table that are part of the discussion that you'll see as resolutions in the final recommendation that comes forward. This is a slide where I want to spend some time. I want to talk with you, and David and I have done a lot of legwork here on this small one slide that represents, you know, a good amount of leveraged thinking. What funding is available to us? And these are the questions people ask us that we need to be able to be articulate about. You know, what funding opportunities are available to us to leverage that provide opportunity and impact? And there's impact to leveraging offsets, and there's opportunities. Some of the offsets that we've leveraged in the last two years hurt us in terms of budgeting forward by making the rollover percent increase that much more complicated the following year if you lower your base number. And you just do it by arbitrarily cutting out the number, but you didn't cut the needs, you just cut the number. It leaves you the next year challenged as you look at, you know, rolling forward all that work again, unless you're just going to keep making those cuts year over year. So some of those funding sources are advantageous and some aren't. So I've kind of organized them left to right, we'll read it like a book here and we'll talk about each of them. Community ed is an annual contribution that we draw anywhere from 0 to 200 annually in a budget offset, which is a district offset for the impact of their use in our buildings, kind of their rent, basically. Electrical, custodial, time supplies, running the copy machines. Basically, over the years, Irene basically stranded a percent off of all of those operational costs at a, at an impact of 0 to 150,000 to 200 based upon whatever budgeting we were trying to develop and is a comprehensive approach and also based upon what community ed had in terms of robust service use. You know, if they ran a smaller program one year, she drew a smaller amount. So similarly, excuse me, this year I see leveraging the FY23 for the $200,000 offset across the operational costs. The advantage of that is it's a year-over-year benefit. So it exists, it provides a sustained benefit without impact, so that's, that's good. And I think this year we'll definitely apply it and we'll use the full 200. When we look at ESER funding, things get a lot more complex. In ESER 3, we have 634,790. Strategically, I feel very strongly that that needs to span two years. So that we have time to see the staged impact of the staffing, to see what staffing might need to remain and roll into budget and what staffing should roll out based upon diminishment of COVID impacts. And we would need two years to figure that out. All of the positions that we're holding, and it's all staffing, we're holding this year for 23, currently Dave has 341,000 on it. And that's got a very specific list of teachers. It's mostly tutors, actually. It's, it's, it's currently carrying four tutors and three teachers.
Were those additional staff members?
These are all addition, they were all, they're all here now.
Right.
And it sustains them into the rollover of 23. It's the tutor positions, it's the staff positions being maintained. It's, it's the, it's the.
But they were added for COVID.
They were added for COVID and they are being maintained into 23. As we see, can we close out their use or, and then they would fall out of budget? Or would they need to be sustained? For example, the, the inclusion-based tutors at Gibbons are very advantageous for the math support. And we hear about the math support and the need for more math support, you can bet there will be an argument at the close of the sustained time that maintaining that for those interventions might be well an argument we'd make that it'd become a permanent budget fixture. We're arguing right now that maintaining the class size levels that we've established through COVID might well need to be maintained or might be able to be reduced at the end of 23. We need to track that number closely, look at where we are, and then answer those discussions. So.
When you say tutor positions, you're talking about math tutor positions or are they different?
They, they cover a range. There's an, there's, there's, they're tutors across district, there's two, two of those are at, I mean, we have tutors across district, we have several. The two that happen to be on, it's somewhat arbitrary which ones are on this grant, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want some tutor from Mill Pond calling me saying that they understand their position is hanging out there. So who's where is arbitrary. We have a range of tutors across district and currently three are on the ESER grant. We did add positions and so they're appropriate to be on that grant.
Right.
We added examples, we added an inclusion recovery tutor at Mill Pond that's doing some really great programming over there, the math inclusion, the math tutor and an extra inclusionary support tutor at Gibbons, so two. So those are the ones that had come in, plus then we had three teaching positions that we're maintaining into next year, which we had in the original, the fifth and the two elementary positions, and those are currently on ESER for next year.
Okay.
So that constitutes the 341, and we're holding then roughly 290, right, for FY24 to give us transitional recovery opportunity based upon how things play out. That's just, those are estimates. I mean, we sit in the office, we're like, what do you think makes sense? How do you, you know, it's not advantageous to pull them all to ESER because then the following year, you'd be having positions that have to go right back in and you're just going to blow up 24 with staffing allocations. So again, it's very important that we not use funding sources that then disappear, it's like using free cash. So, you know, we want to be really careful. So that's ESER. And I think those are smart decisions for the current FY23 budget. The next column that I want to talk about is the kindergarten revolving account fund. At the end of the year, now this is another interesting account, advantageous, but also a deficit, you know, in the sense that those positions are true existing positions that are district-driven positions. They had all lived on kindergarten for years, a chunk of them, half of the staffing. And then when we went to tuition-free kindergarten, we had two years to diminish that account and close it out. We actually didn't close it out because we had all this additional savings because of transportation and other things. We basically shifted off of the kindergarten revolving, put them into salary and let that basically hold, knowing that it would give us the advantage for two years of potential funding to stretch out, pulling, just holding down our salary costs, basically. It's ways we can leverage funds effectively to mitigate how big our percentage increases are year to year and to try to come in respectfully with the most advantageous budget we can manage. So currently on the FY23, we have 450,000 on that revolving account. It holds, I think, 180 remaining for the following year. That would allow us to mitigate and roll in that staffing next year and see where we are. Sometimes you get a retirement, things change, we don't need someone. So not all of those positions definitely have to come in, but right now they would because they're on there and they'd have to roll in. So these represent advantageous leveraged funding opportunities that we package through discussion and use that to look at when we look at the final cost center, which is the operational cost of staffing and all of the contracted services attached to that. So I think Dave's been really strategic in how he's visioned this. I think it protects us with some funds held while it also doesn't set us up that the next year's budgeting would somehow then have a whole other layer of complexity that is just kind of kicking the can down the road. This is a good year to do that because the salary rollover is 4%. So, you know, that's a big jump, and being able to not have all of that staffing in that pile that year is helpful. Do you have pieces to add?
I don't know.
You usually put a better finance.
No, that's a.
He usually says that with a lot better financial language than I do.
That's a good summation. I think, you know, I would just kind of follow up, which is basically what we wanted to do is, you know, with the ESER, with articulate was who was on it and who do we want to roll forward and with what we knew we were getting, how can we add to it? But then again, leverage the capability of not forcing everybody in in FY24 and strategically looking based on service and COVID impact, you know, what's it look like? So it was really, the good news potentially could be is that, you know, staff doesn't need to go out, so we can strategically either move ESER to other resources or discretionary dollars. But again, it was an emphasis on, we don't know the answer similar to what they're asking, it's, we'll have to see what comes and we want to be prepared. So that's that effort related to ESER. The kindergarten account was a good news story for me, you know, I, I didn't know it was existed, so when we found out there was, like you said, between the 450 that we're using, we allocated and leaving the 187, so there was about 637, 638 available in the kindergarten that, that basically based on my understanding of last year's kind of end of the year number allowed us to kind of re-journal things back and forth, but left that, that pot of money alone, we said strategically the same approach with the ESER of people sit on it, it's not going to be around forever, but what's the plan and how do we use it? So being cognizant of the 4% increase, knowing that we're basically starting at a four with, you know, the teachers and the teachers themselves out of human capital in compensation being, you know, 80, 70 something, close to 80% of our budget on the, on the staffing side. Strategically, at 4%, what do we do to make sure that we're not going to get hit again with basically what could look like a 4% even if it's not negotiated that way next year? So we strategically try to push it out and then we'll cross that bridge with knowing that we have resources available to use going into 24 or 25 potentially.
Yeah, and I think getting to a more, like some, some shifts in the strategic planning to be already looking to next year is helpful and, and to plan forward for that. I think the other piece is, if that doesn't end up having to be, if those funds then in 24 don't end up having to be leveraged against staffing, you can use them advantageously to lower your overall budget request by offsetting busing or other types of costs that are one-time or, you know, you, you do maintenance where you do one-time purchasing, you do other things that advantageously, you know, bring you to the town with a, a percentage that represents, you know, your best opportunity to. to keep it manageable while providing the services we need to. And if you can get it off of staffing, it's always the best. So, you know, I think that's kind of the long-term hope.
And I think another, ESER can be used for three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, again, if we have a good news story at the end of the next year, then we essentially can figure out a two-year strategic plan to use resources as opposed to just.
And it might be that it is summer work or other types of things that are kind of like expenses that allow you to, to manage. You're always better to get it over to the programming side, feels very, very good. We just haven't had the time to do that because we have so much layered into the human capital of the work. Let's see, sorry, you're almost there. So this is the less, you know, this is always the most complicated slide is the circuit breaker slide. So do you want to step them through it?
So the, I'm going to move through this. The collaborative line is essentially a cost that we, you know, it's not, not out of district. It essentially, it's a smaller cost related to the service of students with disabilities, but allows us to, it's a less of an intense student service model location or placement for them. That number always is, is lower for most districts. And here that 109 represents that. Our out-of-district number this year was excessive. Not excessive meaning that we didn't plan for it. It's just a bigger number than I think we all expected to see. And that's that $3.4 million. So when you look and you combine the two, that's how you get the 3.5. When you look at the circuit breaker offsets in the next category, what they do is basically take the actual number of, that was the actual number of claims submitted to the state of the circuit breaker. 75% was the number that came in from the circuit breaker reimbursement, which historically isn't, that's one of the highest I've ever seen.
That's really good, yeah, actually.
Sometimes you get a 68, but that was 75%. So there you get the 1.4 million. Less amount for unanticipated, that number zero. So basically the COVID circuit breaker claim back that we're going to get is the 1.4 million. If you take the out-of-district number at the 3.4, you offset it by the 1.4 that we're getting from the circuit breaker reimbursement, you're left with 1.9 million. Then adding the collaboratives back in at the 109, you get $2 million. The actual budget, if you were to scroll back to the previous slide of what the tuition cost was, it's 1.467. So essentially, the estimate is short 600,000. So that is, again, a number that I don't want to say is unanticipated. It's just normally not that big. Historically, we're able to kind of pull out $100,000 for saving and plan accordingly for that. But this year, because of the number and because of the issues related to special education, the students that, the increase in students that we received and the struggles to find out-of-district placement for them has allowed us to not essentially be underprepared for what happened. And that thus forward, seeing that sort of unanticipated deficit of 630,000.
And I think it's always important to remember, there's a couple notes again. It's always highly fluid. I mean, it's just, this number moves a lot. You realize you're budgeting now against numbers that are, you know, just evolving because it's really a moving target. Again, I think the current costs capture a difference in seven. I think there's a difference between the end of, at the end of the school year to now, a difference in seven students. That's a lot. We often get students that come back into district that have been out of district. We get a lot of offset back and forth. They might be gone for a couple of years and they come back. We actually had a couple of move-ins that were already in out district placement. So you just basically incur the cost. So we're two of those, one or two of those. And I think there was one. And then you have students that, you also see an increase in the tuition rollovers annually are fairly high in these programs. And as you know, I'm talking to a group of people that understands this, you can have one placement move from 75,000 to 250,000. So you can have a student at one placement that is, you know, a very expensive placement and that's inclusive of tuition perhaps and then transportation on top of it. So it's a very fluid number with high impact swings potentially. The, the difference this year is, is the 630. So the thing about circuit breaker is that number just kind of drops on you and it's a base budget impact against last year's budget. So we always start by giving you that number. And here we're kind of ending with it tonight because it's kind of, you know, no fun to look at it. We love our students and our programming and everything. It's just the number hit on that is particularly complex for us annually. And sometimes hard for people to understand as well. I think that when you look at the 630, you know, it's just, it is what it is. One of the pieces is that, for me, it all comes down to all this as, this is kind of a basic math. You've got 630 here and you have basically 200,000 in the other costs that we held out to you and the others, you know, earlier tonight. So you're looking at basically, you know.
Slide 14, if you want.
Slide, do you want me to go back to slide 14? If you go back and we just look at the overview, so you kind of leave here tonight with the big pieces, you basically have those costs, which we walked through, 200,718.
Plus the 630.
Plus the 630, right? So before we look at the, the salary and rollover of best, all the contracted services or all the human capital, you're looking at about a 1.3 there on average out of a $58 million budget. So, you know, in raw math numbers, the overlay is just a 1.3 before we even look at anything else. And so, you know, that's kind of the numbers we're grappling with. And then we're working at all the staffing rollovers. And then you've got portions of those salaried staff that are on grants and other offsets. And so right now we're, we're kind of working on those. So I want to bring you forward to the, to the next piece there and just talk about resolution to the next steps. I mean, you know this process well, we do this annually. To get to the final recommended, recommended budget that I'll bring to you, we're going to continue, we continue to circle through the staffing needs. We go back, we look at our numbers again. We look at that tiered staffing list and the requests on that. We look at the caseloads for specialists. We look at, you know, shifting people in small incremental changes. I don't need that, all those people, it could be a point two for the music program or I only need, I need an additional point one for, for, you know, the wellness program. Like it moves by just kind of working those numbers. That's the largest, most complex workload when you're building the budget. So we do it last so that we have as long as possible to work on it before we bring a number. We assess the revolving accounts. You can see I just shared with you some of the leverages we're already anticipating using there. We look at cost centers, we do review them again. We assess grants. That takes a lot of work for Dave to meet with Sheri. And sometimes she's doing things with grants and he's doing, they gotta, they gotta cross-reference their lists. And we review tuitions again. So Lisa and Sheri are working really thoughtfully around the tuitions. They'll give it another look. Actually, a couple of years ago, I was last year, Irene's number for circuit breaker changed because she went back and scrubbed all the tuition numbers again and found like one out of district that she had double counted. So we look at it all very, very carefully for every opportunity to call out that number and make sure it's hard when we bring it back to you. And then we'll continue, we're going to do the FinCom discussion. We'll go back, we still have more leading, leadership meetings. And then I address questions you forward based upon this presentation. And all of that folds forward for us to bring you to a final recommended percentage. So we close with a little budget history. This represents eight years of budgeting. You ran the average, what's our average?
The average on, on, on those numbers is 3.73.
So over eight years of budgeting and running the district over eight years, we have averaged, you know, 3.7% increase in the way that we're running the district. If you kind of think about that as a temperature check. I also think it illustrates that each year the budget for us is defined by the needs. And you see that in the, the range of percentage changes based upon what we're facing for staffing or different programs or COVID or circuit breaker. I mean, I, I think it's an authentic budget process that starts year-over-year by really looking at what we need that year to run the district. I think that it's important to note before we close that both FY21 and FY22 had been over 5% before we did those cuts. So this budget you're going to see will be over 5%. You can't run the district if we keep cutting it over and over. So for the last two cycles and even part of 20, where you absorbed again the busing transition by some singular cuts, you've had three years where you've really come in to keep that as tight as possible. And so this budget will be over 5% when you look at it. We'll not be recommending that I can cut it more. As a matter of fact, before you see it at five or anywhere in the fives, I will be doing more cutting.
I think I would just add one thing is that, as she mentioned, the grants and kind of the shuffling, to be cognizant of, I think the three big ticket items for me that I'd want to communicate is the contract at 4%. You know, what she just showed you in that 800, 800 number is a large, you know, those are two basically where we're starting. And then related to the question of can you offset, so let me redline related to grants and revolvings, there's a handful of grants that, in my opinion, are susceptible for, for review. You know, Title I, IDA, long-term grants that hold significant consistency. A lot of the other grants are not palatable for offset because it's just going to come back and bite us, it's just kicking the can down the road. Revolvings that exist, you know, essentially they'll go away. The, the good part of that conversation is that even though I've been, been, only been here for five months, there has been some talk about increasing revolvings based on initiatives like community ed, growing in adult, adult programming, things like that. So there's opportunity, but none of those have come to fruition yet. So I just want to be my, for, you know, you as a, as a team to be mindful of the fact that when there's recommendations to, you know, offset more, it just because of the fact that at some point we're end up, we're not cutting fat anymore. We're starting to hit bone. And, and, you know, as a student-centric kind of financial steward, it's, it's difficult for us to make those decisions, knowing that we're going to rehearse these same conversations if grants and external fundings either don't exist or really start to diminish to a point where we can't put people on them.
So I think this presentation gives you a pretty good overview of kind of current numbers moving towards final recommendations. I think we already are obviously working the number forward and then it'll only get lower, it won't get higher. I mean, that's kind of where we are at this point. All the work that we're doing is really trying to bring it to a lower percentage. It's not, and that's not even looking at, you know, anything in that tier one. And as I said, that's why I frame that as anything in there has to be, it's a trade, it's a change. It's, you know, it's something different in order to live in coming forward in this fiscal year. I think we have a shared process. I think we'll be in good shape in terms of you feeling confident that we've done the best we can when we put it in front of you. And we'll be working, it's tight, it's going to be tight again. I know you like to see these presentations ahead when you can. But we only have the weekends to work on them. It's going to be Thanksgiving next week. So, you know, it's going to be tight for us to carve out the time we need. I don't anticipate that you would get it much in front of you again too much earlier. You have two weeks to look at it afterwards, almost three. And it's a little bit of a different process, but you want to see the best we can give you. And, and so I want for our own mental health to make sure we are stepping away a little bit too.
Yeah, and I understand, you know, with Dave just being in the district for five months, that to me, going through this process a little bit slower with fresh eyes on it is so important. Already, you know, you've kind of seen things and helping us recognize where we can leverage, you know, certain aspects of the budget. So I understand it's like a slow, like walking through molasses sometimes to kind of like get to it. But I think that the outcome will be worth the time spent on it. So, but I do want to recognize that is a lot of work.
Thank you. And then the good news was, you know, not, there's a lot of good news, we tend to find one. But one of the good news was, you know, because of the warrant process that we just had with the appropriation of the ELL position and the payroll, you know, last year's budget was increased. So that does help kind of the, the, the change number between last year, between this year and next year's proposal by 103,000, so.
So thank you. You guys get the energy award for really like around two very intense attention topics. I mean, you know.
Be back at them.
Yeah, I'm built for late night attention. This is like what I'm into. So, you know, it means a lot that you guys have sustained an incredible amount of attention tonight. And that's it for our two big ones.
Can I ask a question? Is it quick?
It's quick. It's really quick.
I want to, on slides six and seven, you don't even have to bring them up. I'm curious about, those are both COVID cuts that happened in FY21 and 22. I wanted to know in the future, which of those are actually, need to be restored? And why? Because I feel like we can't ignore them forever. And it seemed as if what I was looking at as increases didn't cover quite a few of those that were on the list of COVID cuts in those two years.
Yep.
There, there are a couple and I, we can call them out and tighten down a slide for you, definitely.
And there was a revolving account that was cut back then. I don't know if that was still needed, you know? So there's pieces of that. And then I would be remiss if I didn't mention that there is questions that parents have brought to my attention about staffing for math tutors at the high school. You know, I don't know that this is a budgeting issue. This might be a department issue. It may be a, you know, when I think about the history of that over years, the challenge of math overall at the high school for many, many, many students needing a tutor of their own personal, you know, need. It feels as if there's a question about it. There was a question about it, you know, for the past years, whether it was a, I'm not sure what the budgetary look piece is, you know? Is it that the curriculum needs to be looked at? Is it that there's a COVID gap that happened over the past year in math, which would be understandable? And whether there's some way to be viewing that? I don't know that it's a budget issue. People brought it to my attention as if it was a budget issue.
It's a curiosity. I mean, like one of the things when we ask questions and when, when parents and students and different people bring us things, being curious about it is the first place to start. So I'm curious about wanting to understand the tutor structure. It's one of those things where I feel like the itch for a survey, Daniel, I do. I would love to let a survey students to ask, how many students really? Some of those things are mythology, like we have 4,000 students. There are 1,000 students at the high school, 1,100 students. How many of them are getting tutored? How many of them are doing their tutoring because their crisis is a grade? Or they like the extra support? Or they're having complexities that are a range of things? So tutoring as a methodology is a, is a type of question that makes me curious. And I think we would want to understand that curiosity as part of responsiveness. And some of that is not maybe budgetary so much as a responsive curiosity to learn a little bit more. And that, that would come back to Daniel and I to kind of do some work on and think a little bit about.
Yeah, I mean, because it becomes an, if there is an issue, it becomes an access issue. It's not equitable across the board. Not everyone can afford a tutor. And therefore it comes on to the teacher to give extra help, which most teachers offer extra help. I believe that our teachers are doing a great job doing that. But I just think we have to sort of take a peek at it.
Yep. The high school faculty by contract are available 45 minutes at the end of the school day every day. So any student requiring support.
Decision is what is brought up. Let's find out.
Right, right. So being curious is interesting. And I would agree that our faculty do a range of really dynamic supports. And there's also areas where we want to understand access and all sorts of things. So I don't disagree at all. I think it's a great question and one that precipitates more questions in a good way. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a short update. If you all recall, we spent a meeting, a good portion of a meeting, talking about the MSAC resolutions.
Yep.
Okay, they were all passed. But what was interesting is the one that was debated the most and had the smallest majority was the one on buses and looking for federal funds. had the smallest majority was the one on buses and looking for federal funds. It was really amazing to me how difficult it was to convince people they should vote for it. And the reason why they were scared was that if it was a federal mandate and the money was quote, "given" to the bus companies, then they, then the, and in fact, they got a lot of money for that. Then when the grant disappeared, that the local districts would have to pick up that expense.
Mm-hmm.
Which was really a totally different story than what was written in that text.
Interesting.
So anyway, I found that quite interesting.
Yeah, thank you.
And I guess one of the other comments is that we're in District Four and the president of MASCE, the retiring president of MASCE is also in District Four. And one of the discussions we had during that work session was, à la our discussion a couple of meetings ago about electric buses, grants and so on. And I put my foot out there to basically work with Division Four to see what we could find out on three levels. One, whether we could get support of our state reps and senator to go forward and push the legislature for help and particularly trying to round up those federal funds. And secondarily, to get in cahoots with other school districts who may have an interest in doing the same thing, so that we could pool that interest with all the reps and senators that exist for those other school districts. So anyway, if it ever comes to pass, I would certainly willing to go forward with that with the district.
Yeah. We do have to accept a donation to the Borough program. Do you want to share the details of that?
I'll go through this quickly, but I also want to give it the recognition it deserves. So there was an anonymous donation to the Borough in the amount of $700. And in short, it will be used to assemble desserts for the senior center. This is in coordination with Westboro Counseling on Aging and they hope to deliver anywhere from 100 to 125 meals. So there will be, this donation will help put together approximately 100 to 125, almost dessert treats in coordination with that effort for Thanksgiving at the senior center. So not only will they get some good meals, but they'll get a nice dessert presented by the Borough. So the amount is $700 from an anonymous donor and I think I would just request that you accept it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the donation of $700.
With gratitude.
With gratitude.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Oh baby, they should send those pumpkin caramels, those are really good.
Really good. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the next meeting of the school committee will be Wednesday, December 1st. Again, Happy Kindness Week to everyone and I hope everyone enjoys the Thanksgiving holiday. Please use the short break from school as a chance for reflection, renewal and gratitude and stay safe. Thank you, everyone. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor. Yes, I see five hands. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.